This meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leone.
Here.
And Council liaison Acosta.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 6, 2018. The consent agenda consists of one item, and that is authorization to hold an executive session. I have received no requests for removal from the council, so do I have a motion on the consent agenda. A motion is second. Council, please vote. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now adjourn to executive session.
With either party, ASU or the city, in any one year being able to exit is before you. So 247,011 is the proposed budget for the year one deliverables. If at the end of year one, and upon review of the report, and deliberation, and all good consideration, we decide, well, you know what, we just don't see that growing and don't want to be involved in years two, three, and four, we can exit. ASU can exit, or we can decide to take the next step together. So all in, we're at about 1.7 million for four years, but we have flexibility to pick which exit we choose, if any, to exercise. In terms of defining success, really, the key definition of success will come out of the ecosystem development assessment report. What are we dealing with? What do we have to grow? What do we have to leverage? What are our gaps? How do we overcome our gaps? What's the execution? And what are the metrics associated with the execution would come out of that? Some of them are indirect, but important, metrics in terms of relationships. Increased relationship with ASU generally, ASU West specifically, AZTE as well as West Valley Entrepreneurs.
May I add something to that?
Absolutely.
So just to add, on the detailed proposal, what you'll see also that we do say, in year one, it's much more about participation metrics. Who's participating? Who's showing up? Who are we gathering? How many people are coming to these things? Who's coming to us for services? Those are all participation metrics. Who's actually coming to these things? Who's, again, enlisting us for our services? In years two to four, we do say that we want to move towards outcome metrics. What's the impact that we're having? You know, what's the financing that's being raised? What rate are companies being identified? So there is a shift again where the first year is about creating that engagement vehicle, and that's why we do talk about participation metrics. You can't talk about participation metrics in years two, three, and four, because if you're just saying people are just showing up without measuring the depth of that engagement, what does it mean that they show up? What are they doing with what they do? When they learn? When they come to these workshops? If you have the same kind of repeat people showing up to workshops, but they're not actually doing anything with it, then they're not absorbing. They're not learning it. They're not taking it to the next level. So year one, there's a set of participation metrics that we talk about years two, three, and four. We do want to move towards outcome metrics.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. So, without a doubt, all of this information from the assessment's going to be very meaningful, valuable information. Say after one year or two years, either party decides to walk away. What hap— who owns that information?
You do. The city of Peoria does.
Thank you.
Because we paid for it.
And, you know, by the way, the idea of walking away from something is not something that's taken light. There's—I think the idea is more, here's what we think we know, here's the base in which we have to work from. What we had created as far as predictive, in terms of the normal path and the normal course of things, and here's the acceleration, and here's a ramp up we could do in years two, three, and four. It might be that we're having a different conversation that says, you know what? You're so far ahead, we're now ready to jump into year three versus jumping. And again, it's not a linear process, but it is a growth process. It does grow and iterate. So it might be that we're saying in years two and three, you know, we need to do a little bit more foundation building, we need to do a little bit more evangelizing, we need to do a little more cheerleading before we get into the direct interventions, because whenever we do the direct interventions, we're only seeing a conversion rate of 3%, right? So that's going to become a wasted effort if we're saying, let's not worry about the conversion efforts before we worry about the participation efforts here. I think that this plan gives you a way to, without being linear, think about a modular approach that grows and builds, as opposed to saying, here's where we know we're going to be in year three. And it might be that we're going to calibrate and say, good, we need to front-end, front-load a lot more of—there's no point in putting 20 mentors here if there's not a ratio of 20 mentors, even if we identified the four just from EDAB, right, and said, okay, great, let's start with you guys. You know, if you're only talking to three companies, that's really different than saying there's a volume that demands. So part of it's a supply and demand question, too.
Any other questions?
ASU West, you've said that many, many times, and maybe I'm just ignorant, but you guys are at Sky Song. You're at Sky Song and a lot of it—
I'm at Sky Song, I'm in Tempe.
You're everywhere, yeah.
I'm in Chandler, I'm in—yeah.
But I'm not aware of much E&amp;I, if any. Are there going to be E&amp;I programs at the West campus?
We—so, we are—the way that we—it's not campus—we're not place-based when it comes to E&amp;I as a whole. We serve the student population, all 103,000, including those online. Some we do better than others in terms of physical presence and physical activity. So the idea is that at ASU West, we have a population of students, we have a population of faculty, we have a resource and an asset there that we ought to leverage more. Do we do work with ASU West? Of course. We have launch days on ASU West, we have a Changemaker Campus on ASU West, Changemaker Central, we have an entrepreneurship catalyst on ASU West. I think it depends on where one interacts with us. So many people interact with us at Sky Song, some interact with us only at the ASU Chandler Innovation Center. So there's a degree to which we meet people where they are, and we're not going to ask ASU West students to come out to Sky Song to get a set of things that they could get at ASU West. Does that make sense?
It does. I just wasn't aware of what was going on.
Yeah, so there are five academic campuses of Arizona State University, just in the regional metropolitan Phoenix area, and those five academic campuses, again, for the most part, we're not asking students to take a class in Tempe and then drive 25 minutes to get to a class in Peoria, and then drive 25 minutes and get to a class in Polytechnic. On all of our academic campuses, we support student entrepreneurship, varying degrees. Tempe has the most number of students, there's 53,000 students in Tempe, there's 3,000 in ASU West, 4,000 at ASU West?
Almost 4,000.
Almost 4,000, yeah.
Councilmember Hunt?
Bobby, you've been so quiet. What is your role in this—this whole thing?
My role at ASU West is to promote—or at ASU is to promote all of ASU into the West Valley. So my role is to be here as a support and connector for our communities into the university. So this is one project that ASU has in the community, a potential project in the community. I'm here to serve and support.
Connector.
Yes.
Need you something? Okay. So, oh, it says thank you right there. Well, so I also want to say thank you. I really appreciate year one so much because—the assessment that you do by way of participation is more valuable to me than anything that I can think of. There's studies, there's analysis, there's, you know, all kinds of transparency, where we're trying to get the community to be involved, but it's a whole different thing when you've decided to host 25 events that have something of a benefit for people who are entrepreneurs. I mean, it's tremendous. It is tremendous, and it serves our citizens really well, and, you know, that's what we want. That's what we do.
And again, to be clear, it's because we want to be able to offer you solutions, and offer you events, and offer you programs that make sense for you. There's no such thing as, hey, just do these three things, here's the magic formula, and mix, and voila, you're going to have this suddenly great entrepreneurship op-ed. Takes time, work, and intentional design is what—you know, and ASU is a big believer that you have to design for outcomes that you want, but you don't do it in a vacuum. And so it's very much about being responsive to you, to your citizens, to your population, to your city, to the physical assets, to the intellectual assets, to the cultural assets, et cetera. So it's out of respect, it has—that's the only way. Anybody that comes in and says, oh, I'm going to give you this great plan, and all you have to do is implement this, and it'll work.
Sign here, pay here. Well, Scott, thank you for bringing this entire program to us, and thank you, EDAB, members who are here tonight, for all the work that you've done to get us to this point. I appreciate it so much, and we certainly look forward to doing business with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.
Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Peoria Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Thursday, February 1, 2018. First thing we're going to get started with is calling roll. We will start with Vice Chairman Jeff Nelson.
Present.
Secretary Jay Aluski.
Present.
Member Brian Patterson.
Present.
Member Lynda Grace.
Present.
Member Clay Alsop.
Present.
Member Joanne DeConde.
Present.
And alternate member John Albright.
Present.
We are all here. I'm going to get started tonight by reading an opening statement. This commission is composed of Peoria's citizens who have been appointed by the city council to serve on the commission as a civic responsibility without compensation. Our duty is to study and review planning and zoning issues within the city of Peoria. The commission hears zoning cases, holds public hearings, or may conduct a study session on the topic. Decisions made by the commission are forwarded as written recommendations to the city council who take the final action. All hearings are conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules for Procedures and Robert's Rules of Order—sorry, Rules of Procedures and Robert's Rules of Order. Each case will be called in the order at which it appears on the agenda unless otherwise announced during the meeting. In the interest of maintaining a fair and efficient hearing, the commission adheres to the following steps. Chair will call the case. City staff will provide a brief report and recommendation. The applicant is then invited to give a presentation. Then any member of the public may provide testimony. The testimony is limited to three minutes, so when we call your name, please come up to the podium and provide your name and address for the record. After all the testimony has been taken, we will invite the applicant back up to provide rebuttal or final statements. Finally, we'll have the commission decision and discussion and decision. Anyone wishing to speak must complete a speaker's request form and hand it to the assistant on my left down at the end of the dais. Please be as brief as possible and do not repeat statements already made by others. Any member of the public may appeal to the city council the decision of the commission regarding conditional use permits. The appeal must be submitted in writing to the Planning and Community Development Department within 15 days of the date—15 calendar days of the date of the commission's decision. All commission recommendations on public hearing items, including general plan amendments, rezones, zoning code amendments, and special plans, move forward to a regular city council meeting. The city council will then act upon the recommendation of the commission. The city council may concur with the decision, modify it, overturn it, or remand it back to the commission for further consideration. We welcome citizens' comments and fellow— It could be one of those nights. And as fellow citizens of Peoria, we thank you in advance for one of the—for your participation. So on the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, or have been previously reviewed by the commission, and will be enacted by one motion. Tonight's consent agenda, we have only one item. Item 1C is the minutes. Discussion on possible action to approve the minutes, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on January 18 of 2018. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the minutes. Is there anything further under discussion? All in favor, please—well, please vote. Yeah, that was—that was my other meeting. Okay, the eyes have it. Yeah, totally off script here. Okay, we're going to move on to the regular agenda now. We do have unfinished business to tend to, and that is case 2R, the Z16-0013 Cowtown rezoning. Request to rezone approximately 78 acres from special use to floodplain—oh, and—I'm sorry—and floodplain to Cowtown planned area development to clarify the allowed uses, development standards, and operational criteria for Cowtown range. I believe staff has something to say to this?
Indeed, Chairman, and members of the commission, thank you. Lori Dever. So we do have an update this evening, and as you can see on the screen, and I want to direct you to the memo that we provided up on the staff, which would be an email that we have received from the deputy land commissioner from the Arizona State Land Department. Based on that email, he has identified that the parties are continuing to negotiate in good faith. However, they have not reached an agreement yet, and there is a material item that they wish to continue to work towards an agreement on, and that may take some time in order to do that. So accordingly, they have not rescinded their letter of opposition. And while the agreement with state land and the applicant is outside the purview of the rezoning application, staff is making the recommendation—we believe it's in everybody's interest—in order to not move the case forward until that letter of opposition has been rescinded from the state land department. So we are consequently changing our recommendation this evening. We are going to ask for a continuance of the case to the March 1, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. With that, the applicant is here, and I believe wishes to make a statement as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Nelson?
Thank you, Chairman. All right, just for clarification, the letter said that it anticipated it would take an additional five to six weeks to resolve. We're looking at four weeks out here. Is that going to be enough time?
Staff believes at the four-week mark, we'll either provide an update to commission at that point in time, or we will likely have an agreement in place. And so I believe the applicant can speak better to the material items and what they feel is an appropriate timeframe.
Any other commissioners have questions of staff? We do still have to open a public hearing on this, even though we plan to continue it, or can we just—no? Don't have to open a public hearing? Okay. Okay, so the applicant would like to make a statement. Would you like to approach the podium? And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brian Greathouse, 702 East Osborne Road. Yes, we are supportive of a continuance tonight. We are—we have been, and we continue to work with the state land department. In terms of timing, we're ready next week to hammer this out. The state is a large organization and not as nimble as we are, so it's been a challenge getting it done. That's the only hindrance. All the terms and everything have been progressing towards what we've always been talking about the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any questions for the applicant from the commission? See, the speaker request is clear, so everything's it, so—
Thank you.
So, being that, do we have a motion to continue case number Z160013 to March 1?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue this to March 1. Item 2R, Z16-0013.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this case to March 1. Would you please vote? Okay, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to new business. First item up on new business today is case Z—ah, it really is going to be one of those days. I can't read either. Case Z06-15A.1 Marriott Town Place Suites and Fairfield Inn and Suites. Request to amend the existing Paradiso Planned Area Development zoning district to enable the development of the property for a hotel use and associated uses. The site is a vacant parcel of approximately 3.3 acres located at the southwest corner of 75th Avenue and Paradise Lane. Staff, you got a report?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Cody Gleason, senior planner with the Planning Department. As reference, the case before you tonight is Z0615A.1 for Marriott Town Place Suites and Fairfield Inn and Suites. The applicant, Amina Peoria LLC, is looking to amend the existing planned area development to provide for a hotel use within that PAD and the associated development standards that would accommodate that use at the subject location. As you can see here, the site is located at the southwest corner of 75th Avenue and Paradise Lane. To the north, you have existing commercial development. To the south, you have the ACDC canal. West is Skunk Creek Canal and an apartment complex, and to the east, you have vacant land. Here's a representation of the surrounding zoning adjacent to this particular site. As you can see, the C2 and PAD accommodates the shopping centers to the north. The PAD allows for the apartment complex to the west. And though it may sound odd, the channel to the west and south are actually zoned for—to the south is RM1 and agriculture, and then to the east—or I'm sorry, west is PI1, which is planned light industrial. To the east is a vacant parcel, which is currently zoned PI1. The existing PAD allows for a wide array of uses that you would find in a typical commercial shopping center. However, the use listings within the existing PAD are somewhat dated and reflective of the time that the PAD was adopted. So the applicant is proposing to modify those standards to allow for the desired use of a hotel. The existing PAD calls for uses such as stamp shop, coin store, hobby store, photo printing shop, things that aren't really relevant in today's market and probably aren't the highest and best use at the proposed location. A little bit of background on this particular site. As I referenced, it is currently zoned PAD. The existing Paradiso PAD was adopted in April of 2007. Subsequent to that PAD adoption, the city went through a study process of the larger, what is now known as P83 Entertainment District area, and tried to identify what is the character of this area, and what are the appropriate uses and form that that development in the surrounding area should take. That plan was adopted by council in July of 2010. That plan, as I referenced, really identified the vision for the P83 area and what's referenced as the Sports Complex Urban Design Plan. So it identified the vision and form for the developments in the area. So it identified the vision and form for the developments in the area with particular character areas. This site in particular is referenced in that plan as the east end and calls for an assortment of mixed-use options. One of the key components of that Sports Complex Urban Design Plan was the urban form that the developments should take in the area, really drawing the buildings to the street, pedestrian-oriented amenities, and really providing activity space and pedestrian scale for the uses within the Entertainment District. The proposed PAD amendment tries to provide for and accommodate those intentions, not only within the general plan designation for the site of Sports Complex mixed use, but also the more specific criteria identified within the Sports Complex Urban Design Plan. So it does provide for some of those more urban elements that you find within locations that are often referred to as things like entertainment districts. So it provides for the larger height allowance. It provides for reduced setbacks in order to draw those buildings in that form to the street where there's more of a pedestrian interaction as you proceed along adjacent to the developments. This development in particular calls for a four-story hotel use with 198 rooms. Those 198 rooms would be spread across the two different formats of this hotel, one being the Town Place Suites and the other being the Fairfield Inn and Suites. The two uses would share a joined lobby, the purpose of which would be providing minimal impacts on the area, such as the need for additional staff, parking, amenities on-site, so that those two formats can share those uses and really accommodate a more functional site as a whole. This site in particular, one of the amenities that would be provided with the hotel use would be a rooftop pool over the central lobby that you see there at the center of the two wings. Some of the other criteria that are identified within the PAD, again, draw the building towards the street, provide for pedestrian connections that serve a regional trail system in this area as referenced. There's the Skunk Creek Canal, and within that canal, there is a larger regional trail system that this project in particular would provide for an important leg of. Along Paradise there, this project would accommodate a 10-foot sidewalk, which would function as a multi-use path for a leg of that Skunk Creek Trail. Excuse me. Additionally, some of the design standards that are provided for within the PAD Standard and Guidelines Report work to tie this development into the surrounding area, providing things like theming for the P83 Entertainment District. There'll be a sign at the approximate corner of 75th Avenue and Paradise, similar to those that you may have seen in the P83 District. There'll also be theme walls that will incorporate design elements, not only from the proposed building elevations, but also draw in elements from the P83 District. Some of the changes, in particular, to the development standards that are occurring within this PAD amendment is the change in height, front setback, parking spaces, and the landscape width. So the change in height is more of a technical change rather than a functional change. The existing PAD allows for a 60-foot height maximum, but then it carves out an exception for mechanical equipment to go beyond that 60 feet in height. For functional and readability purposes, the applicant's proposing to simply change that to 65 feet, so there's a clear delineation of where the height maximum is and what's being accounted for within that height maximum. The front setback, as referenced, in an effort to draw the building towards the street and have that pedestrian interaction, is reducing from 40 feet to 10 feet. The rear setback remains the same at 30 feet. The parking standards, the applicant did a parking study in association with this proposal to reduce the amount of required parking. In that parking study, they evaluated items such as parking requirements for other local jurisdictions and also jurisdictions out of state. They took a look at hotels that have similar formats and found that the one space per room, as well as the city of Peoria currently has additional requirements for things like additional guest spaces that aren't necessarily accounted for in that. In the applicant's evaluation that they provided, it made a clear distinction that .8 spaces per room accommodated all of the desired uses that would occur, whether it's staffing for the hotel or the guests, or guests that are holding meetings in the small meeting rooms that exist on-site. In addition to those .8 spaces, the applicant is accommodating some of the accessory uses that they're looking to allow on-site, so the restaurant-bar use that's proposed as an accessory use would accommodate additional parking, and that's being provided for within the Standard and Guidelines Report. Again, in order to facilitate a more urban form, the landscape frontage width along Paradise Lane has been reduced from the typical 15 feet that you would see along a collector or arterial to seven feet. That seven feet allows for appropriate planting so that you have kind of a softening of typical concrete and/or block materials with some vegetation, but it also provides enough space for that vegetation to survive. Here you see some conceptual elevations of what's proposed for the site. As you can see here, you have kind of the two wings of the site, one functioning as one format, the Town Place Inn and Suites, and the other functioning as the Fairfield Inn and Suites. That lower central portion would be the lobby area, which contains the rooftop pool. You can see kind of a rendering there of some of the shade amenities.
This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council liaison Acosta.
Here.
And council liaison Keytrust.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 6, 2018. We have two items on our study session agenda this evening. Community Facilities District is the first one, and Human Services Resource Center Exploration is the second one. So I will turn it over to City Manager Jeff Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council, and appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on both of these items. And as you had mentioned, we'll start with the discussion of community facilities districts. But more importantly, probably the way to look at this is really a discussion about growth and the financing of growth. The topic of community facilities district is referring to a financing tool. It's a name that is a little vague, but the reality is it has important implications to the city and a number of important policy decisions that we want to make sure that you're aware of. So just a quick tee-up primarily for the audience here today. In Peoria, when we talk about the cost of development or the cost of growth, we're referring really to two different things. One is the cost of operating services, and so the cost for supporting our police officers and firefighters, our recreation staff, providing solid waste and the like. That is largely supported through our general taxes or through utility rates. But there's another cost as we finance new residential and commercial growth, and that is the cost for capital improvements, those large improvements of infrastructure such as streets and our water lines and our parks that also help to make Peoria for what it is. And that's a lot of the discussion we wanted to have here, because as we talk about that, a lot of issues come up about how should we be paying for this? Who should be paying for that kind of capital improvements? For how long? And what happens if the development doesn't go as we have expected? And as a result of that, we want to talk about specifically a major tool that is being used for the master-planned communities that we anticipate in the future, and that is something called a community facilities district, or CFD. We'll use that term a lot. CFDs are not inherently good or bad. They are just a financing mechanism, but if they are administered incorrectly, could have serious implications on the residents in those areas or on the city itself. And so for that reason, we wanted to introduce our Deputy City Manager Katie Gregory, as well as our Chief Financial Officer Sonia Andrews, to talk about CFDs today.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to just open it up a little bit, and then I'll pass some on to, pass it on to Sonia to talk through some of the keepings, and we'll kind of go a little bit back and forth throughout the presentation. But as Jeff indicated, this evening, we're going to provide a brief overview of some of the key elements associated with community facility districts. And the purpose of this presentation is really twofold. First, we're going to talk through the general mechanics of utilizing a CFD for development projects, and then we will also want to revisit a little bit of Peoria's policy. As you know, there's been some changes to our policy, but we want to revisit some of those recent changes and talk about, a little bit about the formation process, and also highlight some key policy considerations for the council to discuss. And while this presentation is really for your information, it should also be noted that we do have and are currently working with an owner and a developer up in the Lake Pleasant Heights or the Mystic development, and we do anticipate that we're going to have a submittal of a CFD application very soon. So this is timely in the sense of trying to give some information on that, and it would be a good time to review that policy. Okay. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about what CFDs are, and just to start, I'd like to just kind of give you a visual representation of how kind of the funding of projects or how infrastructure is funded by a developer and how that works. So generally, landowners who wanted to develop land are expected to pay for the infrastructure needed to service their land. And typically, developers then have relationships with various banks or lending institutions where they're able to then get their capital used to fund the projects that they need to do. And depending on the infrastructure, we also have a mechanism that you've heard about and that we've used, which is called impact fees, that sometimes we can provide credit for some of that infrastructure that's also required, and that's for things such as water and wastewater and streets. But there's another option for developers, which is called a special taxing district, which is what a CFD is. Once a taxing district is formed, and usually that's prior to any development on the property, bonds can be sold, and the developer can use those funds, there we go, developers can use those funds to pay for the immediate acquisition and construction of improvements, and then put those payments back on to the property owners within that, within that development. And they can use that, the mechanism they can use is either a tax rate, an additional tax rate, or a special assessment, and we'll talk, or both, and we'll talk about those a little bit further. But I'd like to have Sonia kind of walk you through a little more specifically some of the key elements of a CFD, the life cycle, kind of how that works, and some of the benefits and risks associated with a CFD.
Thank you, Katie. So there are five key elements to a CFD. First of all, as Katie has mentioned, the primary use of a CFD, it's formed to finance public infrastructure, like roads, streets, most commonly on vacant land, and in Arizona is most commonly used for master-planned communities. A CFD is also a legal entity. It is a separate political subdivision with its own powers to enter into contracts. It can be sued. It can sue. It has power of eminent domain, so it's an own legal, separate entity. It is also governed by a board of directors, and with the new legislation, the composition of the board of directors has changed. As you, council knows, we have two CFDs, and the council is the board of the CFD right now. With new legislation, the board will be council plus two or five appointed members, and we will talk more about that later. Another element of a CFD is it also has to be within the city boundaries. It cannot cross over between two cities or into a county, you know, area. And finally, it can issue debt, like Katie said. We can issue geobonds, which is supported by tax, or special assessment debt, or it can actually issue revenue bonds, but most typically is geobonds or special assessment debt. This next slide, what I want to do is take you through a life cycle of a CFD. So there are really three parties to a CFD, the developer, the city, and ultimately the residents within the CFD. So in the first year, the developer is focusing on pre-development activities. They are entitling land, they're getting their financing, they're working with the city, they're usually the primary property owners, and they're usually working with the city to form the CFD. So they're submitting the petition to form the CFD, they're submitting the application. The CFD, the city is facilitating the formation, working with the developer, reviewing the application. So assuming this is a 10-year development, year two to year 10, once the CFD is formed, the developer will be constructing the infrastructure. They may not be the developer that's building the actual homes, so they're selling land to the builders, and the builder is doing the vertical development. So between the developer and the builders, they're building and constructing. And at the same time, the CFD has been formed, the city is, through the CFD, issuing debt. There may be an initial bond sale, there may be one or more additional bond sales, and depending on interest rates and bond structure, they may be refunding bonds as well. And since the CFD is formed, the city is also working on creating board meetings, developing budgets, collecting taxes, managing debt, issuing annual reports. That goes on for well beyond the 10 years of development. That could go on for 20 years or 30 years, depending on when the debt is issued. And at the same time, the engineering department is accepting the infrastructure being constructed by the developer and also taking over the maintenance of the infrastructure.
Sonia, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is...
What is the -- are there limitations on the types of infrastructure that are allowed in this, and where is that formulated? And is it put into a contract? How does that work?
There's actually not that many limitations on the infrastructure according to the state statute. There's quite a big list of infrastructure that a CFD can construct, aside from roads, water, sewer, parking facilities, parks and recreation facilities, civic buildings, all that, streetlights, all that can be constructed with CFD financing. The city's policy, which Katie will go over later, restricts the use of CFD to large regional infrastructure, and we will talk about that later. There are reasons why the city council, back in 2014, actually revised the policy to allow CFDs for just large regional infrastructure and not, you know, local in-track infrastructure. And like I said, Katie will go over that later.
Sonia, the one caveat is it's public infrastructure.
Yes.
That's the one restriction, and it's got to be public infrastructure that's being built.
Able to be used by everyone, even outside of this master-planned community.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. It has to be public infrastructure, and the city has to be able to maintain that as public infrastructure.
Thank you.
And finally, in this little life cycle, the residents, you know, they're the third party in this, they eventually buy the homes in the CFD, and they're eventually paying for the debt the CFD issues through property taxes or special assessments. And this slide just tells -- shows you that there's value to CFDs. Over time, there's growth in land values as the land is being developed. There's also building and economic development activity that happens in a successful CFD as, you know, the activity goes on. So I want to go over with you the next few slides, some of the general benefits of CFDs as well as some of the risks and considerations of CFDs. So the city benefits if there is a successful CFD because it may promote economic development goals. A CFD may create commercial areas for development. It may advance city infrastructure projects. It can offer higher-quality developments with added amenities and aesthetics. How it can do that is because the CFD is financing the infrastructure, it may free up funding for the developer, so the developer can then add additional amenities and aesthetics to their development. And lastly, but most importantly, the city's financial exposure is limited. The debt issued by the CFD is not city debt. The city has no liability for CFD debt that is issued. But it also means that the property owner is ultimately responsible for paying that debt. Now, the developer benefits from the CFD. The developer gets low-cost financing for required infrastructure, and as we talked about, the property owners are the ones paying, repaying the debt. And because of that, the developer can reduce their equity commitment and their carrying costs during development. So that's kind of their primary benefit. There are risks to CFDs. The primary risk would be there may be different tax rates between developments, so the development across the street may end up having a different tax rate, if the developer goes bankrupt, if there is a significant recession where the assessed values go down, and the developer is out of business. The city is not responsible for the debt, the property owners are ultimately responsible for the debt, the property tax will have to go up to cover the debt service. There is a risk to the developer if we enter into a development agreement with the developer where they have to cover the difference between what the property taxes raise and the debt service, and if the property taxes don't raise enough, the developer may have to make up that difference. And finally, the risk to the city, it is one of the more complicated financings that the city will undertake, and mostly because we're selling debt to bond investors. And bond investors have to understand what they're buying, and they have to be comfortable buying this investment. So there's a significant due diligence on our part to make sure we are not selling bad bonds, to make sure we disclose and relay, you know, enough information to potential bond investors so they know what they're buying. They're buying CFD debt that's backed by developers and, you know, property taxes, not backed by the city. So it's one of the more complicated financings that we will undertake. And there's also risks associated with bond defaults, even though the city may not be liable for the debt, but they may be guilt by association. If one of our CFDs bond defaults, you know, we may have a kind of a bad name in the market associated with CFD debt. And other risks to the cities, as we talked about in our little life cycle chart, there's a lot of added burden to the municipality. We are holding separate meetings, maintaining separate books and records, managing budgets, managing the debt, issuing annual reports, and that goes on for well after the developers are done and the development is done. And finally, it can complicate future bond elections. And what I mean by that is I'll show you a little chart that it's called overlapping debt. So whenever someone is paying property taxes, they are actually paying the school district property taxes, the county's property taxes, the city has the $1.44 property taxes, the state and other small districts also have property taxes. And if we create a CFD, it layers onto that property tax and adds another level of property tax. So in this diagram I show you, the city has $1.44, and our existing CFDs has a 2.10 tax rate. So that adds another tax onto the tax bill. And if we have a special assessment, that adds yet another burden onto the taxpayer. And finally, I just wanted to quickly show you that the city currently has two CFDs. We have a Vistancia CFD. It was established in 2002. The tax rate is 2.10. $100 million of debt was authorized. So far, 67 million has been issued, and that went to finance water and sewer infrastructure. And Vistancia West CFD was established more recently in 2015, also has a 2.10 tax rate. That's a much smaller CFD, 9 million is authorized, and only 3 million has been issued, also went for sewer infrastructure.
And these also, or at least the first one I know, I think the second one might have some kind of a cushion, a backstop, if you will?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Both of these CFDs, we have what we call a standby contribution agreement and a letter of credit with the developer, and it's bankruptcy-proof. So the letter of credit, we can draw upon if the developer is unable to make the payments.
Yes, Councilmember?
So these are protections that we currently have in place with these CFDs.
Correct.
To protect the homeowners, the taxpayers. Does the current legislation interfere with that as far as future CFDs go?
No.
Or are we still able to negotiate those? Okay.
We are still able to negotiate that.
Okay.
Thank you. And the challenge with that is we can negotiate it, but it still rests on the financial strength of the developer ultimately. They can sign an agreement, but if they go bankrupt, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. The letter of credit with the bank, we can draw upon, which is bankruptcy-proof, but if we have a standby agreement with them and that they're unable to contribute because of, you know, their financial abilities or lack thereof, then there's nothing we can do about it, and the only way would be to raise property taxes to cover the debt.
Yes, Councilmember Hunt?
So when one of these districts begins to get a little bit older and homes are sold and new buyers and so on, maybe the second or third buyer, is it incumbent on -- who is it incumbent on to let that second or third or even fourth homeowner know that they're buying into a little bit different, especially where the tax is concerned? Is it like CCNRs where they just give them to you and say, "Read it"? So they don't really tell -- they don't have to tell the person that they're getting kind of double taxed, right?
There is required disclosure, that we require the developers to disclose the tax rate, the risk, to the potential property owners and the buyers. You're absolutely right. It is more like a CCNR, here are some disclosures related to a CFD, please read them.
And Councilmember Hunt, it does also, when you're -- when a secondary owner comes in, within the title report, there is that disclosure as well within the title report. So, you know, there is a risk, but fortunately, hopefully, there's good realtors out there, and there's people who are paying attention to that and making sure that their clients are aware of that as they're signing their paperwork and they understand what that means.
Okay. We would hope that they are. I'm sure there are some that don't, just like in an HOA with the CCNRs.
It's quite possible.
Where there's an element of surprise later.
Quite possible.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, how is the initial rating for the bonds set? What do they base that rating on for the initial?
So the initial bond, usually they're unrated initially, and so they're -- because we just, you know, it's very -- it's difficult to rate these bonds.
That's why I was asking the question. I couldn't quite --
Very good question.
-- get my arm around that one, so.
Yes, they're usually unrated initially, and they're usually negotiated deals with, you know, a financial institution. And subsequent bond issues can be rated. So our Vistancia, the Vistancia West CFD bonds are not rated currently because we have only done one issue, and the Vistancia CFD bonds, I believe, are rated A.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure, actually. I should look that up before I say that.
So if you did refunding bonds, there'd probably be a rating associated with refunding bonds?
Yes.
And then my second question is, do these have any impact on the bond ratings for any other entity? So you talked about it stacking, right? So the school district that might issue some bonds, do CFDs have any impact on how that the assessed value or the bond rating, how it would impact them? I'm just curious.
You know, one thing I might mention is just a recollection of prior reviews by some of our credit rating agencies, Standard &amp; Poor's, Moody's, Fitch. In the past, we had conversations with the city of Peoria's creditworthiness. Obviously, we have incredible financial stability, great record, strong reserves, but there was a notice of recognition that we are still a growth community, which creates an element of risk, and that in that way, they kind of recognize that growing communities do have to look at this kind of mechanism as a way to finance. And so in a way, that kind of limited us for a while and why we were at AA+ instead of a AAA for a bit. I don't know if that answers your question?
No, I think it does. There's really not a direct connection there at all. It has to be something that an analyst or somebody kind of looks at and decides that there's either -- there's going to be an impact or no impact, but there's no mathematical direct connection. Okay.
That's correct, because bonding -- rating agencies look at our city's economic condition, our financial condition, our management practices, and debt coverage, and not necessarily only at the -- an overlapping debt. Yeah, an overlapping burden to the ratepayers.
Thank you.
So then...
Can you also answer one more question? The impact of state land. We've got a tremendous amount of state land in this area where we have large, open swaths of land. So how does state land impact CFDs? How do CFDs impact state land?
I can probably take that one. Generally, state land wouldn't necessarily impact the ability for a developer to get a CFD because the developer has to be the owner of the property. So that means they've already gone through the process of purchasing the land from state land and have ownership. Now, there may be pockets of land that are within a larger development that are state land and haven't been put up for auction yet. Now, what you run into is that concern about when that state land does come available and the owner may try and may or may not be successful at getting that state land, there isn't a CFD in that little area that's outside of the developer that came in and the boundaries that they currently own. So there is a risk then that you get into that situation where one side of the street has a CFD and the other side doesn't. And so from a state land, you know, standpoint in our northern Peoria area, you know, that is a concern because there are pockets where they are not currently owned privately-held land.
Can I add on to that, too? When state -- if somebody comes in and buys a large portion of state land and they phase out the development of that new development, it's very difficult for them to put a CFD on it because they're encumbering onto the property that they haven't taken down yet, and state land won't allow that to happen. So it's -- that's where it gets difficult if you're going to phase out a state land property, a new developer. If they're going to phase it out, it's very difficult to encumber a CFD over that whole entire property.
And I think phasing it out is a very normal way to deal with state land.
Yep.
And so then as a city, we have to decide if we want to take some responsibility for second and third homeowners' property values. And, you know, if you've got one tax rate on one side of the street and another tax rate on another side of the street, do we want that to happen in our city?
Absolutely.
And if we don't, how do we prevent it? Because in some cases, it's very difficult to prevent.
Very, very true.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn this back to Katie. We're going to go over the CFD, the city's CFD policy right now.
So all we wanted to do here was just tee up some important considerations for council for both what the staff looks at. So when we get an application from a -- for a CFD, you know, we are evaluating that application against the current council policy, but also give you an opportunity to just kind of be reminded of the policy and what it has and what we've placed on ourselves in terms of our policy guidelines. So first, just want to start by saying, CFDs were originally enacted in 1988 through the Arizona Legislature, and in 1991, Peoria was one of the first adopters of creating a CFD policy, which really established our policy guidelines and application procedures. And then in 2005 and 2009, we had some minor revisions, but it wasn't until 2014 that we did kind of our first major revisions to the CFD policy. And the first one was restricting CFDs to large regional infrastructure only. So it's important to understand that the statute allows it to go -- to be used for any public infrastructure that's being developed. However, we've restricted that through policy to be more of the large regional infrastructure and exclude out the in-track subdivision-type development or infrastructure. We also included some special consideration for development that was in conjunction with some major economic development projects. So if we had a major commercial coming in or a commercial area that truly met one of council's policy goals related to economic development, we would have the ability, you know, to consider CFD as a way to generate the needed funds for the infrastructure associated. And then also, the third one was to establish that CFD financing would not be considered solely based on the equivalency, right? So just because there is a CFD here doesn't mean the next door or next development automatically gets a CFD. And so that was -- we wanted to make that clear in the policy, that when we're working with developers, that, you know, that's not a criteria we use to decide if we're going to move forward with an application.
Katie, Andy, if you don't mind just elaborating a bit about what was the rationale for deciding on only including large regional infrastructure?
So that really was to help ensure that the development pays for some certain growth-related costs. So again, this gets back to that concept of growth paying for growth, and if we focused on the large regional development, they're helping to add to that regional infrastructure. And it helps preserve the city's bonding capacity as well, right? Because typically, we would have to then go to our bonding capacity to then use -- to build some of that infrastructure. So this is a way to kind of really affect that growth paying for growth equation.
Okay. So in 2017, there was Senate Bill 1480 that made some changes to the CFD statutes, and it became effective in August 9 of 2017. So council may remember that in September of 2017, we made revisions to the city's policy in response to the Senate Bill 1480. And three of the major changes were it expedited the CFD application process, and I'll go through with you in the next slide. It changed our process to review the application and form a CFD if the council chooses to. It also placed a limitation on the application fees. We can only assess $15,000 for an application fee when a developer brings an application to us. And like we said earlier, it changed the board composition, which, again, we'll go over a little bit more later. So this slide, I wanted to take you through the CFD formation process and talk to you about as we look to receive this application from Lake Pleasant Heights, what we will be doing. There's really three stages to the formation process. First is the application stage, then we have the public hearing and formation if council decides to form it, and then finally, adopting a budget and tax levy if the CFD is formed. So in stage one, we have pre-app meetings. I'm going to go through this rather quickly. We have -- we're reviewing the proposed improvements with the developers, we're looking at a draft application, and we're providing staff feedback to the developers, telling them what we will not accept, what we will accept. And finally, when they bring in a completed application, we launch into a comprehensive review. All departments are involved in this. All departments are involved in this. And according to state statute, within 60 days of that completed application, we have to hold a public hearing and council has to consider an intent to form a district. And then there is an objection period. After 30 days, if there is no objection, or if there is an objection, there's another public hearing and council will consider whether they want to form a district. And if the district is formed, the CFD board is formed, the CFD board will then look at a proposed budget, adopt a potential proposed budget, and adopt a final budget. And finally, the tax levy is filed with the county. So that just gives you real quickly what the CFD process we will be going through for this application that's coming through. Council does not have to memorize all this. We will literally hold your hand through this whole process. And so I wanted to talk about the considerations that staff looks at as we review this application. And I'm going to actually turn this first one over to Katie.
Right. And I'm not going to belabor this one, but we've already talked about this, that, you know, statute allows for all public infrastructure. Our policy currently limits it to large regional infrastructure and primarily master-planned communities. That's generally the language that's in our current CFD policy of what we'd consider in terms of that.
So the next thing that we look at is setting a reasonable target tax rate. So as we looked at, Vistancia and Vistancia West is at a 210. So when we look at this application, we're working to consider what is a reasonable target tax rate considering the tax rates in the existing CFD, in the existing CFDs in the area. And we're also, statute allows for a 30-cent O&M tax, operating and maintenance tax, to be added on to the target tax rate. So one of our considerations is we would limit that, the use of that O&M tax.
I think it's important that currently, we don't, neither of the current CFDs have the O&M tax included.
It's over and above the tax rate?
Over and above the 210. Or over, above whatever the tax rate is, it can be.
Whatever it is. And who's the 30 cents, who does that go to?
The CFD.
It goes...
To be used for operations and maintenance.
Yes.
The city?
In this case, it goes to the CFD.
The CFD.
Okay. So, help me out. Who is, who is the CFD? Who just, who gets the money?
The property owners within the CFD. And typically, these would be used for things like, and you can give some examples of how that might be used.
Okay, so the city creates the CFD. It's a separate district with its own governing board. And, yes.
Yes.
And the CFD district has expenses such as audit fees, investment fees, trust fees, paying agent fees for managing the debt, issuing the annual report, so insurance premiums because the district board has to carry insurance. So those are sort of operating and maintenance expenses of our current CFDs, which this O&M tax can pay for. We currently, with Vistancia and Vistancia West, do not utilize the 30-cent O&M tax, even though there is authority to do that. We require the developer to pay those fees directly. And the O&M tax can also, by statute, be used for maintenance of infrastructure, which some other cities, like City of Buckeye or City of, I don't know, Goodyear or whatever, they assess the 30-cent tax for maintenance of the infrastructure. We have not exercised that right and...
But we contractually obligate the developer to maintain the infrastructure, even though it's public infrastructure?
No, 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 no. We maintain the infrastructure. If, for some reason, you know, there was something that the developer was going to maintain that was a public infrastructure, they could use it for that. It's very uncommon. I can't think of...
I would say an O&M tax is probably the wrong nomenclature for it. It's more like an administrative tax for all the administrative costs that go along with the CFD.
Okay. So I'm a little confused because the entity who is collecting the tax is just board members and the city is actually doing those administrative jobs, right?
Right.
Well, when they're ready to issue debt, like in the example of Vistancia, if they're ready to issue debt or they need to do, they pay for their, their debt issuance costs directly. So they pay those directly.
Okay.
So they don't pay for it through CFD dollars that have been authorized for them.
Because in that case, the developer is obligated to pay for it.
Right.
But if the developer's not obligated to pay for it, who's the 30 cents go to?
The actual district that's a separate entity.
Right.
So yes, it's a separate district that is created as an entity to collect taxes.
They'd have to figure out how they're going to use that. I mean, bottom line, you'd have to figure out how you're going to use that. You wouldn't necessarily assess a full 30 cents or, you know, or anything like that. I mean, you'd want to estimate, you need to have an estimate of what priority even doing it, you'd want an estimate of what those costs are and what they would be used for. So we'd be evaluating that if there was a request to do that. We'd be evaluating that. Up to this point, we have not done that with our current CFDs.
Okay.
Or allowed that with our current CFD.
Mayor, council, I know it's confusing. We'll move on on this. One other maybe, an example that could come up. Let's say that there is an interest in maintaining the park areas around a development that is way outside the city's normal growth area. And so there's an agreement to have an O&M charge on those residents for a while until such time that we grow to there. That would be a contract to maintain that area that the district runs.
Okay.
And so that would be an example where you have an O&M cost that would not be something the city incurs.
Right.
However, there's pros and cons to that.
Right. That completely goes against the tide of keeping any kind of continuity in the areas with same kind of tax rates.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, go ahead. I'm just going to talk real quickly about special assessments. This is something that has come up and I think it's worth a discussion. So they, CFDs can also do what's called special assessments. So there's the one mechanism, which is to apply a tax rate and collect through the valuation of homes and what it, you know, what valuations of homes and apply the tax rate to it. And that's the revenue that we, that's generated. There's another way to do it through special assessments, which is not based on the property values, but rather the cost of the infrastructure divided out among a set number of units within the development. And each unit then has an equal share of those costs. So it's a little different way to generate the revenue needed to pay for, or to issue debt. Some of the challenges we have with special assessments under the current policy is that they work best for more of that in-track development. And of course, our policy kind of excludes the in-track. And the reason for that is because that more closely has a nexus to the actual benefit that those people are receiving, that are paying the assessment. So we want to just keep that in mind. And they can be, they can be used for more regional infrastructure. It's a lot more complicated and honestly, probably less desired by the developer because they are, remember, they are a major property owner. At the beginning, they own all the property, right? So if they put a special assessment and they have to wait until all the units are developed to really not have to make a payment on that, they're going to be making payments on that special assessment for a very long time. So assuming they issue debt against that, obviously.
But if, but if it's done that way, in the end, people can pay off that special assessment when they sell their home.
That is one benefit of the special assessment is that if a property owner has a special assessment, they can either amortize that basically over however many years, you know, 20 years or whatever it is. Or in the event they're selling their home and want it to be a cleaner, you know, look, they can say, look, I will pay the special assessment. But depending upon the cost of the infrastructure and how many units you're spreading at a cost, you know, assessments can range, I think, when we looked at it, $2,000 to $5,000 per unit, just as a general.
Can there be a combination of special assessments and tax rates?
Absolutely. You can absolutely do that.
So special assessments could go on things like that Leapfrog Park or something like that?
Any, any piece of public infrastructure. Now, a park is considered kind of, you know, serves a larger area. So it depends on the infrastructure and how you, who you want to assess that on, what area you want to assess that on. You know, that's what you kind of have to think about.
Okay.
But you can have both. You can have both a CFD tax and a special assessment, which is collected through property taxes also, but it's just done as more of a lump sum each year. And then additionally, you know, the city is concerned with obviously the financial protection of our residents and property owners within the CFD and would want to consider that overall tax burden, right? If you're thinking of a CFD tax, the city has our tax, the CFD tax, and the special assessment, you know, to the degree that you want that level of burden on the taxpayer, we need to, you know, consider that as part of our policy. Go ahead.
So the final consideration we want to bring to council's attention is the Senate Bill 1480 in 2017 changed the board composition requirement for CFDs. Now, CFDs will have to be governed by council plus two citizen board members. Or, at council's option, five members appointed by council. And the way the statutes are written, for the two citizen board members, the largest property owner will designate those two members for council appointment. And there are restrictions that apply. The two citizen board members cannot own more than 40 acres of land, cannot be city employees or employees of the developer, basically cannot have any conflict of interest. So it needs to be two citizen members that the property owners will designate for council's consideration and appointment. And I think that, that's it.
Are there any kind of issues that might occur with those two citizens?
Well, I think it's difficult to think of individuals who may just, out of the goodness of their heart, want to, you know, jump onto a board. They may, you may find that, you may not. It may be difficult to find that. And then it's the longevity of these individuals. How long are they willing to sit on a board and how will that work? So, you know, I think that there is some, there's some complexity to that. I don't think it's something, it's a hurdle we will have to get over and work with the developer who's interested on what that might be. And certainly, council needs to be comfortable with who they're recommending.
Right. And the two board members have to serve for six years.
So...
If, if the developer chooses to opt out of having those additional two people, is that a option?
Not yet. Maybe, but I don't, I don't know that our...
What was the question?
If they want to opt out. I don't think that's what we're challenging. We're not, we're trying to...
I don't think so, yeah.
It'd be great, but it's not going to be an option.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We can, we can go for that next year. How about that?
I think eventually, when, when the developer turns over the homeowners association to the residents of the development, then it could be the homeowners association, maybe president, vice president, that are designated to the board. But until that time, it's going to have to be somebody that's designated by the developer. And that's what, that's the con, or that's the issue that we're going to have, is having citizens or whoever's designated have an interest to come to the board meetings.
And not have a conflict of interest.
Right. And not have a conflict of interest.
Exactly. So that was really just more of the information we wanted to provide. We certainly can answer some questions or if we've answered them all already and...
Well, I would, I would just like to make a comment about our intergovernmental group who last year was really, I mean, really big fighters. There was some legislation that, that would have changed CFDs dramatically and given pretty much carte blanche to the developers. I have to say, there would be, there would be nothing, no stakeholder protections in place whatsoever. And we were able to fight that. And it was a very, very hard fight. Very hard, hard fight. I think it was the year before last, actually.
Yeah, two years ago.
But so, you know, I am very, very thankful to all of their work. It was not easy and I hope that our citizens and future citizens are really thankful to all that work because it makes a huge difference in property values and the value of, of CFDs in our city as we go forward. Big difference. Thank you. That's it. All right.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to have that discussion. We think that is an important primer to have. This policy issue is going to surface very shortly. And in addition, as, as you had alluded to, mayor, we expect that CFDs are going to continue to grow as a mechanism. And other instruments we're more used to, like impact fees, tend to be more restrictive going forward. So we think this is going to be an important policy decisions for our residents going forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
We'll now transition and I'll stall as we begin the next presentation here. In November of last year, at our council retreat, there was a great conversation by the city council and initiated by the city council to evaluate the possibility of what we would call Community Assistance Resource Center or Human Service Resource Center. And the concept's pretty simple, was to provide and allow for some of our not-for-profit agencies here in Peoria to provide direct service to our residents. And the council had an interest in us looking at where would we have such a resource and how would it work and operate. And so with that, we've had our staff look at this very closely and we wanted to provide an update to you.
Great. Thank you. Hello?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I appreciate your time. What I'll do is introduce the item and I'll turn it over to Karen Imbick. She's our Community Assistance Manager on my right, and she will go through some of our findings. So as Jeff indicated, the purpose of the study session tonight is to provide you with our exploratory efforts in terms of a potential Community Assistance Resource Center. In concept, a resource center is a type of facility where we could house a, a number of selected nonprofits. It could also include some city staff, as we do provide some direct services like utility assistance and emergency home repair. So it could be a facility all housed in one place that we have available to our citizens. Now, the interest in the resource center was first expressed at the November 3rd council retreat, you might recall from that session. We've accomplished, I think, an enormous amount of work in that time period. And what we want to do is be in a position to provide you with information that to the extent the council wants to move over the next budget cycle, we're positioned to be able to do that. Some of the work that we've done over this period of time is we've, we've researched a number of models across the valley. We've talked to a number of our colleagues. Other areas, other municipalities in the valley provide a resource center. For example, you may, you may know that Abendale and Gilbert provide a resource center in a decommissioned library facility. City of Scottsdale provides one within a senior center. The city of Surprise utilizes their old city hall on Bell Road and they're contemplating a brand-new facility for a resource center. We've also been vetting potential locations and what might be an appropriate square footage and how many nonprofits might we be able to provide access to in a facility. We looked at a lease option offsite. We've looked at, is there space available on our city hall campus and/or there are other, there are other options. We've also been, we were, we were grateful that we were able to secure some unused office furniture, working with our economic development department. So to the extent we want to move forward, we have procured and separated some of this facility, some of these, some of this furniture, it's good quality, that we could devote towards a potential resource center. We've also, we'll talk to you about some service model types. We've had some preliminary discussions with some of our other departments, notwithstanding the police department, if there's any security concerns. We've talked with our risk management groups as well. And we've identified a funding scenario. A funding scenario that we've talked to our not-for-profit council subcommittee, but we'll talk to you tonight about that funding scenario. What we'd like to, what we'd like, kind of maybe what we'd like to get from the council is, is a resource center something we want to move forward on? What would be the timing of that? And if we, if there is interest in moving forward, are we generally on the right path? So we'll identify a model and some funding scenarios for your consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Karen.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as Chris discussed, there are some decision points to be made if we move forward, which include timing, location, a service model type, and the funding scenario. So starting with timing, we feel that if we move on the trajectory that we're on and with the research that we've done, that we could potentially have a scenario to open a resource center in the next fiscal year, included through the budget process. And if that's the case, then with all the tenant improvements and whatnot that would need to be done, we could potentially open in the last quarter of the fiscal year, which would be the fastest scenario that we have available to us. As Chris mentioned, we've investigated some potential sites, both on-campus and off-campus. And right now, we feel like pursuing some modular units that the city already owns is a very viable option for us. Placing those on the vacant lot north of the PSAB building off of Cinnabar, they are, there's six modular units that are right now housed at the Beersley Water Treatment Plant that were most recently used for the census workers and are available for use. And we would move those down to that location potentially. And it would be about 4,000 square feet of space, utilizing all six of them. And we would have some city staff there and then potentially house between eight and 10 nonprofits in that space. So there are a couple of service model types that we found through our research and knowledge. And the first one being a continuum of service, which is basically a comprehensive array of services that follows a client over a period of time, from the time they enter into service and then transition out of service. And then a targeted service model, which is really a very identified model where we determine what the gaps in service are that the city provides or that other nonprofits provide, and then we determine what we want to house in that center, whether it be veterans' services, disabled services, domestic violence services. So it's more of a select on an as-needed basis that could change over time. And so we would also envision seeing a lot of our city services in there, as Chris mentioned. So some of the things that are offered through community assistance, such as the neighborhood grants, utility assistance, and emergency home repair, those types of services. So those would also be located in there with the nonprofits. That would be our initial vision. The Community Assistance Division, then, would manage contracts with these nonprofits to make sure that they're performing as they intended and that we intended. So that would be another way to keep an eye on everything that's coming in and out of the resource center. And also, we would have a location, a dedicated location, to offer our monthly support series seminars. So the main discussion point that we had the other day with our council, not-for-profit council subcommittee, was to talk about funding scenario for this. If we move forward the way that we're moving, then there is potential to have this done within divisional and departmental budgets. And taking away the federal funds, we would be utilizing community development block grants to the extent possible. So this would take about $450,000 of our CDBG allocation, which is about $800,000. The remaining amount would still go towards administration expenses and then public services that we provide on a continual year-round basis. And those have some limitations, and that's basically that we do provide some public services. And also, an important limitation to the CDBG funding would be that, because it's federal funding, we would have Davis Bacon, we would have to use federal prevailing wages. But that's just a given, and we've done other projects that do that. So it's not something new, it's just a consideration to add some expense. And then we would recommend using a portion of the general fund grants that go through the council subcommittee, which we would use about $135,000 towards this project, leaving almost $100,000 for other nonprofits to utilize. And so it's important to talk about the fact that we did have a lot of discussion about this at last week's meeting with our council subcommittee. And we are basically sending forward a scenario that would accommodate this, if that's the direction that we're going to go. And then, we would need to repurpose the neighborhood grant program, which is the better-known, probably, as the HOA grant. And that would basically remove that grant from service for a one-year period while we utilize it to get this project done, and then potentially start back up again in FY20. And I only say potentially because that's always a one-time supplemental request. And that's $150,000 to go towards this. And then, there's other identified sources within the departmental budget, and that is the commuter rail study funding. And that is basically, as we mentioned in the email that went out to you all last week, is basically being handled by MAG at this time. And so that could potentially free up this $300,000 to go towards this project. So within the division and the department, we've identified a little bit over a million dollars that could go towards this. And we, we're not construction experts, but we have made a very educated guess with some help from the engineering department and some others, that this could take about $850,000, including prevailing wages and whatnot, to move forward.
Those are all, this is one time. And so after this one year of getting this constructed and up and running, then we would take those CDBG funds in following years and go back to directly contributing those to nonprofits. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So this all represents what we believe would be required to get the center up and running and do tenant improvements. I should mention, too, that we've given some thought to the appearance of the permanency of using the modular units. And that budget would also include giving them a better sense of permanency, including, you know, perhaps some stucco and some architectural interest to it, to also help it fit in on campus a little bit better. And so, some of that has been included. One thing that engineering suggested to you was to have it on grade, have it on a slab, so that you don't have, you know, the walkways that you typically see with a modular unit moving up to it. So we think that with the help of engineering and finding the right firm, potentially to help with this, we could make it seem like it's a permanent solution, a permanent part, a home on city campus for this building.
And that location is right on the 83rd Avenue bus line, isn't it?
Correct. And that was an important consideration, too, when we thought of this, is, you know, it's a familiar place for clients to come if they need other services, to pay water bills, et cetera. They're, you know, they're on city campus already, and they're on a bus line, and that's very, very important. And I should mention, too, that we did, Chris and I did meet with our HUD representative for the city, and it was, you know, well-received. They're not, you know, likely to put something in writing, but it's, they were, it was very well-received, and they felt like, you know, this is a, something that is a good use of the block grant funds, if that's what council likes to.
Good. Okay, thank you. Council, questions?
I have some questions.
Councilmember Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for all the work that you've done since November. There's been a great deal accomplished, and I really appreciate that. I know that there was some question from HUD on the modular units maybe not being able to fund because of their permanency. Has that been taken care of at this point? Are they okay with that?
Well, our HUD representative did not have any concerns over that. And we did explain to him the idea that it was important to our city to make it feel and have the look and feel of something more permanent, so that when residents and clients come in, it doesn't feel like an afterthought, because it's not. It's an additional service. So I think with the way that we explained it, it kind of alleviated any concerns he would have, that it was something that would, you know, be here this year and gone the next. So I don't sense that we're going to have any further concern about that.
That's good news. Thank you. When you went out to Abendale and Scottsdale, Chandler, Surprise, and Gilbert, did they give you any indication of the success of their programs?
They, you know, a lot of statistics, they keep a lot of statistics about who's coming in. Surprise is probably the closest partner that would have something in the size range that we're talking about. And theirs is, you know, overwhelmingly booming, partly because it's new and partly because of its location in the valley. There aren't other locations in the Northwest Valley like this yet. The closest large facility would be Abendale. So there's been a high need, it's really, the nonprofits are almost begging to be in their center, and they're kind of bursting at the seams, which is why they're looking at a different facility. But they're processing and helping over 250 to 300 clients a month in there. So, and they have quite a few nonprofits that share space, which is something that could easily be accommodated, so that you can get more nonprofits in that same space. So they might have AM, you know, some people there are AM, PM, some people there one day a month. It all depends on what they're offering. So, so far, I would say that would be the closest in size to what we're looking at. And they're, they're doing a very successful business.
Good, thank you. And the one thing I want this council to know is that, you know, we've been funding a lot of these not-for-profits for over 20 years now. And this time, we're looking at, the city's going to be taking care of itself to some degree. And some of these organizations may not get funding, but it'll only be for one year. And Karen and her group, they have vetted out these organizations well enough to know that if they don't get our funding for this year, they're not risking going out of business. Those organizations that would have any risk attached to it, we're going to fund them. And an example would be Benavia. We run their daycare program, we give them a significant amount only for their daycare program. If we were to cut that funding, they would probably close their doors. And so Benavia is one of those that we've identified that's going to be funded this year. So I just want to make sure that the council understands that, that while we may not fund some of these organizations, it'll only be for a one-year time period. Now, we'll go back into our cycle again next year. That's all I have, and thank you.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Thank you, Mayor. To expand on that, well, thank you for all the work that you've put into this, because so much time has gone into it. And I think this is very exciting. Peoria is ready to set something like this up and provide this kind of service to our citizens. But to expand on what Councilman Patena was saying, is that I think we're taking one step back with regard to our giving, to take a giant step forward in the future, to be able to take the services that we provide, the service level to new heights. And so I think it's just, it's a great move. So again, we're not taking anything away from anyone. This is going to make it so much better in the long run. So, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, so I've been involved in this for a while, and so I have a question for you. The number of agencies that you've spoken to, what's their reaction to the possibility of coming on campus and being part of this? Because I know that other cities are doing it, but when you started this conversation with them, what was their, what was their reaction?
Well, to be honest, we haven't done very much outward-facing public discussion of this until we had some better information and make sure that we're going in the direction that council wants to. So we're really, I mean, based on the involvement that the other centers have, and the really, really strong relationships that we have with our nonprofits, I foresee that they're going to be very excited about this. But we didn't want to make any promises or any gestures to anybody until we were sure that this would move forward. As we discussed this, actually, last week in the council subcommittee meeting, and if this is the direction that we're going, and we are going to wait till tonight, we did put forward a funding scenario that accomplishes this with the council subcommittee. And so it's time to move forward and let our nonprofits know what our preliminary recommendations are. And along with that, will also be information of why we're changing our funding structure for one year. And I think that that's going to start the feed, you know, the really heavy feedback cycle, where we can start vetting some strong interest in who is excited and might potentially want to be a part of the resource center itself.
Thank you. I just want to applaud you and your team for the work that you're doing here, because it's phenomenal work. And reaching out to the other cities and going and doing, you know, field trips and really learning more about what they offer, to kind of come up with an idea of what we want to offer to Councilman Patena and Binsbacher. I'm fully supportive of this, and I like the analogy, step backward to move so much forward. That's a great analogy. And I think it's absolutely time that we do that, because we have so many residents that want to have more services offered to them, and this will give them an opportunity to have that right here on our campus. So thank you so much.
I have a question. You mentioned two different models, a continuum of services and targeted services. Have you decided which one of those we're going to go with, or is it a combination?
No, I actually think that we were looking for an initial nod in one direction or another. I think the staff recommendation would be that we go with a targeted model, so that as the city's needs change, and our growth changes, and our needs change, that we can change with it and, you know, select our priorities.
Yeah, I was thinking with the continuum of service that you're going to, we're going to need to hire professionals and, you know, go home with people.
Right.
Yeah, it seems a little outside of our, outside of the realm.
Right.
But I am hearing general support from this council in a very big way, and I also concur with that. Is there any other comments? All right, well, I think that we're looking to move forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the general direction on that. And that funding scenario will be something you'll see in our budget process coming up here in April. So thank you very much for the help on that. And with that, that's all that we have for study session.
Good.
... His mission is keeping his manufacturing business running efficiently. The foundation of Dante Fierro's journey as a soldier in the Air Force is based on a strong family philosophy of discipline, work ethic, and teamwork. Fierro remembers his father reinforcing the value of an education by having the family work in a plum orchard of Sacramento.
Got on a truck with everybody else. We were assigned a number, my family, mom and dad, my brother and I, in a tent. And there was a little stove out front, and every day before sunup, we'd get up and get in on that big truck, and we're taken out to fields. And we picked plums all day till it sundown, and then we came back. And there was, I remember this old can with water and holes in the bottom that we used for a shower and...
Dante Fierro treasures those childhood memories and admits his father's tough-love lessons work. Dante graduated with a bachelor of science degree. Soon after graduating back in the late '60s, Fierro says he was trying to land a job with the Xerox Corporation when they asked him to check his draft status and found out his number would soon be called.
This was in '67. The Vietnam War was going, you know, full force. And so they said, "Check your draft status." And I went to Pasadena, California, and checked my draft. They said, "Young man, you're going to be drafted in two weeks." So I went back to Xerox. They said, "Well, don't worry, when you get out, we'll have a job for you." So I went, and I joined the Air Force. My father was in the Army Air Corps in World War II. So I had a desire to get into the Air Force, as opposed to the Marines or the Navy. It's just a family tradition. So I joined the Air Force, and I asked the recruiting sergeant what kinds of jobs I could get. And I told him of my degree, and he kind of smiled. He said, "Well, we really just need pilots and navigators." And I said, "Okay, well, I'll try to be a pilot."
Dante became a pilot and attained the rank of major during his 10 years in the United States Air Force. During that period, he flew a number of missions in Vietnam.
I didn't count the missions. It was many hours. I flew different aircraft. But I first started out with KC-135s, which are air refuelers. So we flew around the north side of Vietnam and refueled aircraft from Da Nang and Saigon and places like that. So that was kind of exciting, because we didn't have any kind of defensive systems. We just were a flying gas tank.
After his journey in the Air Force, Dante Fierro's has worked for a number of aerospace corporations like Hughes Aircraft, Allied Signal Corporation, General Dynamics, the Department of Defense, and others. His decades of experience have served him well. Fierro's is now proud owner of Nicholas Precision in Tempe, Arizona. It's a manufacturing firm that has developed some impressive hardware for the aerospace industry.
And a lot of these products, we're not told what they actually go on, but one we do know is that we made a product that goes into a communication or electronic box that moves the arm up and down on the Mars Land Rover. Now, that's, that's pretty historic, that here in Tempe, we made a part that's on Mars. We have parts that go on F-16 fighter aircraft that allows the canopy to be blown off so that the pilot can eject safely. We have components that allow the Space Shuttle to separate correctly from the tanks, those components that are very, very important and critical. Other products that are, allow a trooper to fire weapons safely, this is a trigger safety assembly for a missile.
Air Force veteran Dante Fierro's has garnered some... Air Force veteran Dante Fierros has garnered some impressive credentials in the aerospace and manufacturing industry. He credits much of his success to his parents and his military experience.
My name is Dante Fierros, and I am president and owner of Nichols Precision here in Tempe, Arizona. I am a U.S. Air Force pilot, and I was very proud to serve in the Air Force.
Up next, on the Veterans Business Journey, some words of encouragement from some veterans.
My name is Yolanda Bonilla. I am the president of the American Legion Auxiliary here in Arizona. I'm serving for the year 2017, 2018. Our mission is to support the American Legion by honoring the sacrifice of those who serve, by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families, both at home and abroad. We advocate for veterans, educate our citizens, mentor youth, promote good citizenship, Americanism, peace, and security.
Welcome back. This is the Veterans Business Journey. I'm Jesus Hernandez. We thought it'd be helpful to share with you some words of encouragement from veterans who have overcome some challenges and have succeeded in their professional endeavors.
My words of encouragement to a veteran, first of all, you must realize what you have to offer. It is tremendous, and it becoming more and more important every day, and that's your work ethic.
Well, I think that to be successful, it's really important to be passionate about what you're doing. So, to believe in what you're doing and to, like they talk about, you know, it's not just a job. It's not just about making money. It's about doing something that you truly like to do and believe in.
Definitely, don't try to do it on your own. Do seek the support of others because other people will provide you with input and resources. And when you're working with the law of attraction, it's very powerful to let others know what you're doing.
With a good work ethic, with an education, there's no telling where you can end up. And, but the end result is, is not a monetary success, it's a success of happiness. A success that you contributed to our society, that you contributed to your family, and that you're happy.
The Veterans Business Journey is about honoring our veterans and celebrating their journey in life. We'd be honored if you'd drop us a note. Our email address is vetsbizjourney@gmail.com. Be sure to stay tuned to this channel for the next edition of the Veterans Business Journey. I'm Jesus Hernandez, a proud Vietnam veteran. This program was made possible in part by the American Legion Auxiliary, Department of Arizona, and the West Valley Foundation, celebrating diversity.
Do you remember how we met?
Of course I do, which you're going to tell me anyway because it's part of the gang. So, get in with it.
Very well. Once upon a time, there was a lonely man in a lonely city.
Oh, God, take me now.
What's wrong?
Just get to the good part and make it snappy. I've got a hot date waiting for me backstage, and she's a real doll face.
Okay. Well, once upon a time, this lonely man walked into a used magic store and met the one person who would change his life forever.
I'm kind of a big deal.
I'm sorry, my little friend. It wasn't you. It was an old magician.
Where do I come in?
Well, in the back storage room, the magician kept all kinds of toys and trinkets that he would not sell to the general public. These were his most prized possessions.
Right, so obviously...
And in the far back, he kept what he called, very tenderly, his junk pile.
What?
And in the far, far, far back room is where he'd set aside you.
Right, so obviously, you saw that there'd been some kind of a mistake or I'd been mistreated, and I had some kind of a trinkle in my eye, right?
No. I bought you because you were on sale. And he said you could talk.
Well, at least tell me that the shop was in Paris.
No. It was in Phoenix.
What? No. You mean you bought me from some cuckoo old Merlin wannabe in a dusty junk shop in the desert? I sure hope my date didn't hear that. Thanks a million, Morty. I'm out of here.
Are you sure you want to go?
Well, let's just say, all the great men in the world are dead except one, and I'm not feeling well.
How about this timeline? Thursday, May. Kiss of death. Reserve for those special shows on the way out the door. Just a pack of men. Just wait for us in droves. Got any bright ideas?
Yes, what is it?
George would like me to help you clean your dressing room. How does it work?
What?
How do you make him talk?
Trade secret. Be careful with those.
I've got the boxes outside. I have to put them together first.
Boxes?
Yes.
Why would you need boxes?
George didn't tell you? I guess the theater can't pay you anymore and you can live here anymore.
Take that, you rotten scoundrels! Oh, wait for me, you fools!
Get back, you ruffians, for it is I, the amazing Mortimer with his companion, Sir Thomas of Mesa, who shall thwart your evil plans and bring about your everlasting doom. Captain, what's our next move?
They've got us surrounded. Let's get behind the barricade and wait for reinforcements.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Oh, no. What shall we do? What shall we do?
Pull yourselves together, man!
Sorry, this is the first action I've ever seen.
It's okay, I've got a plan.
What's your plan?
Trolls.
Trolls?
Yes, under that bridge over there. Just use your magic. There's some trolls here to help us win this battle.
Use my magic?
You are a magician, aren't you?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no. We're doomed!
Sir, what shall we do? They're closing in.
There's only one thing left to do. Run!
Yes!
Well, I must say, you've been given a fine imagination. What do your parents do?
I lived with my dad, and it was nice. He used to play with me, and we'd tell stories about dragons and battles. We would always win.
Used to? What happened to him?
He got really sick, and he died. I don't really like to talk about it.
I'm sorry.
Uncle George doesn't like to tell stories. I live with him.
I'm sure he takes very good care of you.
Yeah.
Hey, kid. Morty got you doing his chores?
No, I'm supposed to be helping him move out.
What?
It's okay. I'm moving out, too. Uncle George told me about this school on a ranch. Told the kids, "Live and go to school together." He's going to drive me over to go look at it tomorrow.
Sounds nice.
It could be fun.
You know, kid, sometimes in life, it seems like we don't get a fair shake, or we wish things could stay the same forever, and they just can't. But I've just got to say that as tough as it is sometimes, life has a way of working out for the best. You believe that for us, and we'll believe that for you, okay?
Okay.
Now that I've doled out my pontiferous wisdom, do you have any questions for me?
How does it work?
Magic!
Really? I have to go.
Well, it's...
The mayor and city council welcome you to the Peoria City Council meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council chambers or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the city council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Finn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Finn?
Still here.
Councilmember Patena?
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Leoni?
Here.
Council liaison Acosta?
Here.
And council liaison Gaetres?
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of March 6, 2018. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes items that require a public hearing. If there's any member of the public present who wants to address a public hearing that is on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to... This item will be removed from consent and will be heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public that would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda? Seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Mayor?
Councilmember Binsbacher?
I would like to remove item 7 from consent.
Okay.
For a staff report.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item 7C?
Move we accept.
So, we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item 7C from the consent agenda. Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor and council. And we have with us Adina Lund, our Development and Engineering Director, can provide some background to the city council on this.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm glad to be here tonight to talk about this project. I just have a few slides prepared that will help assist me in explaining this. Tonight's item is a council action for an amendment to an existing intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and Arizona Department of Transportation. The project in question is 83rd Avenue. The limits extend from Happy Valley Parkway to Joe Max Road. If you look at the picture, we've tried to superimpose what we'll be doing. The existing roadway has 26 feet of pavement, enough pavement for vehicles traveling one lane in each direction. Additionally, it has curb and gutter on the west side of the roadway. The residents of the area identified this as a gap for both pedestrians and bicycle connectivity. We have both those amenities further to the north in Joe Max and West Wing and further to the south on Happy Valley Parkway, but how do you connect the two? This project will install additional asphalt pavement so that we can get the bike lanes in each direction. It will also install a concrete sidewalk outside of the western edge behind that curb and gutter that you see in the photo. Initially, the IGA was approved between the two agencies in May of 2016. Then, we began our favorite process, designing the actual project. Well, as you know how design goes, we had some unexpected changes along the way, trying to negotiate through utilities, trying to work with drainage. Overall, we looked at the cost estimate in September when we were finishing the project, and... And costs have gone up, as I've said before. We had some cost increases in concrete for the sidewalk, in asphalt for the roadway. The mobilization costs and the construction administration through ADOT were also larger than anticipated. With this increase in construction, we had two options. We could either choose to fund it internally, or we could seek out federal funding. As you can imagine, we decided to choose federal funding because that helps our pocketbook in the end. We were able to work with the Maricopa Association of Governments, and earlier this year, we received additional funding for this project. So you are here tonight to approve Amendment Number 1. We have to do the amendment in order to apply the additional funding to the project. That's ADOT's process. So for the construction, the additional money from the federal government is going to be $328,000 and some change. Our additional amount that we have to cover is only $836. That's pretty amazing. But I want to go over the overall cost of the project, the design and construction. The overall cost is $1.1 million. That's a lot of money. The federal portion is $1,085,000. 6%, $69,000 will be coming from the city for this project. I think that's amazing. So I ask tonight that you look at this action. If you grant approval, then ADOT will move forward with the advertisement for construction, and we would expect to see people working out there from this summer and hopefully finishing this winter. And then we will achieve the connectivity that we desire.
Thank you. Councilmember Vinsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation, Adina. I really appreciate it. This is beyond amazing that it has come to, what did you say, $69,000 for this project? And I really want to emphasize that how all of you have responded to the citizens. For three years now, since I became elected, I have heard from various clubs and groups and citizens about how important this is to their safety and their ability to get in and out of the community. And what has transpired as far as the relationships that you all have cultivated and worked ongoing for many years before this, but what's happened for this particular instance here is a testament to just a lot of work that has gone into this over time as far as relationships. And as a result, you know, we got amazing cooperation, and you all put so much time and energy in, and not just to the behind-the-scenes work, but getting in front of some of these citizens and these groups and hearing their concerns and listening. And so this just is such a testament to the caring city that we are. And the feedback that I have gotten from the citizens, I want council to know, has been absolutely overwhelmingly positive about this and how grateful that they are that they have been heard, that we have responded, and that they are seeing such incredible results in action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, then, do I have a motion on Item 7?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Right, council, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to new business. This is Item 15R. It's a public hearing, code amendment, zoning ordinance, Section 21-827, sign code. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you. And we have Chris Hawkins, our Planning and Community Development Director, to speak to this item. Of course, this is a public hearing, but there is possible action item to this. And this is, of course, after a lot of discussions, including three study sessions with the city council. So I'll pass it to Chris.
I'll go ahead and start. Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and council. We're very excited to be here tonight, we truly are, to present the sign code for your consideration. This has been an effort that we've been involved in over the last two years, and we think we truly have a good product here to present to you. To my right, I wanted to introduce Lori Dever. She's a principal planner with the Planning Department. You may recall initially when this project started, Melissa Sigmund was the project manager. She relocated to the back east. Lori Dever picked up the project, and she's brought it to the finish line, and it's just been great. She's also very talented on the formatting. It's a big part of this sign code and what we think makes it a good product and very usable. So this is a city-initiated amendment to the zoning ordinance. The purposes of the sign code are threefold. One is to comply with the recent Supreme Court decision of Reed v. Town of Gilbert. I'll touch on that briefly in a minute. We also, it was important to make changes that would improve the usability of the sign code. The current version of the sign code is the version that's been in place almost 30 years or so. So it was absolutely time for a change. And in that change, it was an opportunity for the city to not only improve the quality of design, but make it flexible and usable moving forward. Now, as we approach the sign code philosophically, it was very important that we create the right balance. And what I mean by that is that we create the balance that we protect neighborhoods from sign clutter, we protect our quality of life from an arctic environment, but we also enable businesses to appropriately advertise our services and wares. And I think we've got a very good balance here. However, you know, like any large ordinance, we know that moving forward, you know, we'll monitor it over the next year. There might be an opportunity or time we might need to entertain some adjustments to that. But I think we've got a very good product to show you tonight. A little bit about the current sign code. I think you've probably seen some of this information. Again, we haven't comprehensively updated it since 1989. As you can see on the screen, it's a copy of the current sign code. It's very dense in text. We're looking to move from that and not only have a sign code that meets the content neutrality that the Supreme Court decision requires, but also something that's just easy to navigate. There's no reason why we can't have codes and ordinances that we can't quickly and easily find the information that we're looking for. With the current sign code, it's 48 pages long and 33 different sign types in a minute. I'll show you some stats where we've reduced that quite a bit. The Supreme Court decision that occurred a couple of years ago is known as a Reed v. Town of Gilbert decision. And so that was a decision that essentially there was, the City of Gilbert, the Town of Gilbert, had differences in how they applied their sign code standards based on the message. So ideological sign had a different standard as a different type of temporary sign. So the Supreme Court found that to be invalid. And so what the court ruled was that content neutrality is the key, meaning that when we develop a sign code standards, that they can't be distinguished on the basis of what the message on the sign says. However, we can still have other types of distinguishing characteristics in our sign codes. I've placed a number of those types up on the screen. We can distinguish based on the zoning or whether a sign is a permanent type of sign or a temporary sign, or lighting, or building materials, or those other types of objective measures. I do want to mention that this has been truly a team effort. We've had a lot of people involved. Although Lori and I are up in front of you today, we couldn't have done it without the help of a lot of people here. Several people in the Planning and Community Development Department. We've also been working very closely with our Code Enforcement Division of the Police Department, Jay Davies and Jack Stroud. City Attorney's Office, very important in this endeavor, Steve Berg, David Benton. And then our former attorney, Cindy Odom, was also heavily involved in the project. And then we've also got a lot of feedback from our Development Engineering Department, Adina Lund and her group. It's Jack Situ, Tom Pieros, and Jeff Sterling. So here are some of the facts, new code facts that I alluded to in the beginning. Content neutral, new sign code. We've reduced the number of words, almost by a third. So I think that, or by two-thirds, I think that's a good thing. We've gone from 48 pages down to 22. We've reduced the number of sign types. We've reduced the number of sign types that require a permit by 13, and we've added a little more flexibility. So there's two new sign types that are now permitted that were not permitted in the previous sign code. So we think that's a good thing. In terms of our process, I mentioned that we started over two years ago. We've had two meetings with stakeholder groups. We've had a number of individual meetings, not only with industry representatives, but also other local groups and think tanks. We've been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission four times for study sessions. We've been in front of the city council as well, three times for study sessions. During this process, we've always tried to maintain our information available as it evolved, because it was an evolution on our email, our website, newspaper, and also information that we provide at the counter for walk-in. We've received to date two letters. We received a letter of support from the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. And we've also received a letter which I'll characterize as a letter of appreciation from WEMAR, which is the West Maricopa Association of Realtors. And those are examples of two groups that we worked extensively with in trying to identify, you know, a proper balance in the sign code. So with that, Mayor and council, I'm going to turn it over to Lori Dever. And what we're going to do tonight is provide some highlights. And I think what might be helpful tonight is we'll provide some highlights of common scenarios of things that we see in the sign code. With that?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. So as Chris mentioned, I'll be covering a couple of different items this evening. The first is a quick overview of the new format and the tables that are doing the heavy lifting within the code. The second one is the four scenarios that we talked about. And the first two address residents, how they commonly use and are impacted by the code. The second two are for business owners and tenants and developers of that nature. So what sign types and how they're impacted by the sign code. And then the last item that we're going to touch on is our implementation strategy, how we think we want to roll out this code, because this will be a substantial change from our existing code. So with that, let me take a step back and say first, when we were going through this task, we recognized we have a wide range of stakeholders, from residents, business owners, developers, from our design consultants, from city staff, and everybody in between. So our audience for this code, we needed to make it as user-friendly as possible. And with that, we took it all the way down to the ground, and we built it from the ground up. And so that goes into the format. And we started with the framework. So the new framework, as you can see, signs are now grouped into four types or four main categories. And I'll provide examples of these in a minute. But the first one is prohibited signs. Within this category, you'll see a couple of different things, but illustrations. Billboards are prohibited. They were prohibited in the existing code. They are prohibited in the current proposed code in front of you. Second item, signs that have movement. Blinking, flashing, movement, those are not allowed as well. Another one, pretty common, as you see on the picture on the right, stationary vehicles that are parked adjacent to the street that are solely used and intended as a permanent sign. So those are prohibited. The next category has a long name, but think of this. When we say authorized signs, all districts, no permit required, we are simply talking about government speech primarily, first and foremost. So the examples that you're going to see within here are our government signs, our traffic control signs. You'll see items such as original art displays, and you'll see items such as memorials or historic landmarks and things of that nature in this category. The next two that I'm going to talk about will be permanent sign types and temporary sign types. And that's where the bulk of the new regulations come into play. That's where primarily most of our stakeholders are impacted by the code. On our permanent sign types, those are there for at least a year or longer. We have three tables that you see, building sign types. We have a variety of signs that can go on a building. We have a variety of freestanding signs that go out into, along the street, that promote the businesses within. We also have a variety of other sign types that are included in this as well. And general provisions also factor into the regulations. Now, on the other side, is temporary signs. Those are there primarily less than a year. And those include things that you see on their, the Epic Cell 2.0. I always loved that one. So yard sales, garage sales, A-frame signs, for sale signs. Those are the type of items that you would see within that table. So while that is just one table for a category that is pretty misleading, because temporary signs do make up a bulk of the regulations, and they are equally as heavy as the permanent sign type. So I'll walk through a couple different scenarios now. So table format. Before I start walking through those scenarios, let's take a look at table format. What you see on the screen are two actual pages for Table 1 on the permanent sign type. They are grouped by category. So what you see on those two pages are all the sign types that you can have on a building. And we identified it by building sign specifications. As we go through each sign type in that table, we have pictures, because pictures are worth 1,000 words. It illustrates what we're trying to achieve with those regulations. Next, we provide an example or a description. If there is an accompanying definition that the user needs to be aware of, you'll find it within that description area. Sometimes, a permit is required. And so we've identified in a very uniform and consistent manner when a sign permit is required. It's either a yes or no. And you'll always find it in the same spot. It makes it so much easier to locate for quick reference. Lastly, if there are any notes that the user needs to be aware of, they're provided at the bottom. So it sometimes further illustrates and explains the information within the regulations. So what you have is a very compact set of regulations in a very limited amount of space. So for example, we have six of those 29 sign types on two pages alone. That's a lot of real estate, well-used. So let's talk about those common scenarios. Like I said, the first two are for residents. Primarily, when you're selling, leasing, or renting a property, that's the first one that we often get questions on. The second one would be for a yard sale or special announcements like graduation. For business owners, if you're in employment or a commercial center or developer, you'll use some of the permanent sign options. And for tenants and business owners, you may use a combination of the permanent sign and the temporary sign types, and those are illustrated over to the right. In the first scenario, for a resident, what you see on the left, it is a relatively long name, but when you're having a property offered for sale or leased, first and foremost, people think of the sign in the front yard. No permit is required in that situation. Talking with WEMAR, we provided an additional allowance for the sign in the yard and one in the backyard when properties are abutting arterial or collector roadways. The signs can be up while the property is being offered until 10 days after the execution or the transaction is completed. And it can be a freestanding or a window sign. We provided flexibility. And talking with WEMAR, we understand that if you live in a condo, if you live in a property where the ground outside of your unit is controlled by the HOA, you may not have the ability to provide a sign in the front yard. So the code provides flexibility, and you can place the sign in the window and still be able to achieve the same effect. The other sign that commonly comes to mind in this situation is primarily used for open house situations. Now, residents and their agents can have an open house, and they can provide signage within the roadways. No permit is required. But I will say this, we had quite a bit of discussion in talking about the quantity. If you think back in September of last year, Melissa and Chris were before you, and we were talking about the quantity of signs. The existing code limited to four signs within the right-of-way. That may not be appropriate in all situations. So think of master plan communities such as Vestancio, West Wing, Terra de la Ria. Some of those have very linear and long configurations. And think about the number of turns you would need to make to get to from the major crossroads into the property. So staff considered maybe doubling the number of signs to eight. But we didn't have consensus on that number. We took the matter before Planning and Zoning Commission in January, and we presented the options. They considered eight, they considered 10. And then consensus was reached on the one sign per turning movement within a one-mile radius. What does that mean? So think about how many turns it takes you to get from your major crossroads into your home. Every turn that you would need to make, you would be able to provide a sign to direct future owners of your house to get to your location. So staff believes this is a good standard. It's very uniform across the board. It is flexible in that it meets the conditions of the environment, depending on the subdivision and how often you need to make those turns. And we believe it also addresses the issue of clustering on the corners. So with that, we agree and concur that the one sign per turning movement within the one-mile radius is an appropriate standard for this type of sign. Those signs will now be available to be put up Those signs will now be available to be put up three hours before the event, three hours after the event. And like before, they're prohibited in safety triangles, medians, and traffic circles.
Excuse me, just a moment. Councilmember Edwards?
Can you go back one? There you go. So with the yard signs or for sale signs, is there any line of sight issues? So you know, like if you're pulling out of a neighborhood and you've got three or four for-sale signs down on the ground and you're trying to turn out, make a left-hand turn, and you can't see oncoming traffic, you don't see that as an issue?
Mayor, Councilwoman Edwards, it's a great question, and you're kind of stealing my thunder towards the end of the presentation.
Okay. Then I'm premature.
Yes. There is a safety visibility triangle that people need to be aware of. And so not, so for the layperson, we're creating cheat sheets, if you will, fact sheets that help identify what the rules and regulations for those signs would be. And they'll be available on the website. They'll be able to be handed out so that people can download and be able to understand where they can safely put the signs and what the regulations are.
But really in reality, I mean, if I was going to sell my house, would I be coming to City Hall to pull a paper to see where I could and couldn't place a sign? Because most, you know, yard sales come to mind, you know, they're spur of the moment. And they, you know, people are out there at 5:00 on Saturday morning putting up multiple signs. And so, you know, all of a sudden, we've got a culmination of five, six signs from a huge community garage sale going on.
Councilman Edwards, in working with WEAMAR, they are excited about the fact sheets that'll be handed out to address at least the realtor signs in those instances. And so they've agreed to do training with their agents. They're also going to be providing a copy of the information available so that they are aware. On the yard sale sign, we are on a complaint basis. And so if there is an issue, code enforcement always has the ability to go out and address the situation if there is a safety concern at that point in time.
All right. Thank you.
So yard sale or special announcements, think of this category as the graduation parties, the yard sales, garage sales, birthday parties, kind of those type of items. No permits required for these signs as well. They go in the front yard primarily. The maximum sign area is about six square feet. Typically, they're two by three, which is what you see on the pictures to the left. However, we allow creativity. So if you want to have a shape of a graduation hat, if you want to have a teddy bear, something like that, as long as it meets our sign area, we're okay. One sign is allowed, and the duration is up to three months on that one. And same thing during a yard or garage sale, as Councilwoman Edwards alluded to, you are, you have the ability to provide directional signs, if you will, to those type of events as well. So you have the option at the same time. So moving forward, let's kind of switch gears to the business community and for our tenants as well. If you were developing a piece of property in Peoria, you have a variety of permanent sign types available to you. If the property that you're purchasing or you own is adjacent to a freeway, such as Loop 101 or the 303, you can have a freeway monument sign. One of the changes that we proposed in the regulations is to reduce the minimum frontage along the freeway before you can have one of these signs. Originally, it was 1320. Now you need 660 feet adjacent to the freeway in order to qualify for one of these signs. Depending on the length of the frontage adjacent to the freeway, you can have up to a maximum of three signs. We have maintained the separation distance between the freeway signs, and we have kept the same separation distance from the freeway sign to the residential area. So that has not changed. So let's go into other development centers. You can have a primary monument and a secondary monument sign. So what is the difference? For those development centers that are on major arterials, that have heavier traffic, a heavier number of users on those roadways, a larger sign may be appropriate in that situation, depending on the size of the project. So you may have a taller sign in that instance or a primary monument sign. If the property does not qualify for a primary monument sign, you still can have a secondary monument sign. In some instances, if the center is large enough, you can have both. But there is a separation requirement between those two types of signs. So the max height and the max sign area is based on the adjacent street, and there is a separation distance between those two types of signs, as I mentioned. So also, if you're developing the property or you own a property, you can also choose to do building wall signage or awning or attached canopy signage. Now these two items are kind of grouped together, and this is where we kind of do a choose-your-own adventure, if you will. No, a permit is required in both instances, and these two are grouped into a bucket condition. The developer or center owner can choose to have some wall signage, some awning signage. They can have all of one or none of, it just depends on the scenario. And it depends on the architecture. If canopy signage is appropriate, they can, they could put a portion of it in canopy signage. So the location and the percentage of the signage is based on the developer or owner. So the tenant has, a tenant coming in, a new business, could potentially have their sign out adjacent to the street, as we've shown, you know, either a freeway or a monument sign. They can either have it on a building wall sign, or they possibly could have it on a canopy sign, as in this illustration. Now for these two particular items, we've allowed a greater, we've increased the allowance of both. So there's more flexibility in terms of creativity and the amount of signage that can be possible. Kind of going into that fourth category, third and fourth category. The next one is a new one. Although it's not new to the Valley, it's new to Peoria and what we're proposing, and that's projecting signs. A permit would be required, and these are typically attached to the building or supported by the structure. And we believe this may be appropriate in complementing the existing architecture and creating some more urban feel of certain types of areas and projects. So we believe this is a good asset to have, a tool in the toolbox, if you will. The next is also considered a new sign type. This goes into the temporary sign type. So you're a tenant or a new business owner, and you want to, say, I have a special. You have the ability to use an entry A-frame sign. There's no permit required, 365 days a year. You just need to have this within eight feet of your building entry, and it needs to have four feet clear around the sign. You just pull it in at the end of the day, and that's it. Another option, if you're a new business owner, congratulations and welcome to Peoria. You have the option of going into what we call the grand opening in new business. Now these changes, the, sorry, the standards that are within this category are substantially unchanged. No permit is required. You can choose from options like balloons, banners, flags. And it starts happening within the first six months of receiving the business license. You're able to take advantage of these regulations. The duration is max 60 days. So for our existing business owners, and they want to promote maybe a special event or spring training, they can go with a special promotions. There is a permit needed for each of these installations, four times a year, maximum 30 days. But they have a variety of options that they can kind of customize based on their particular site. And the limitation is based on what they choose. So there's a variety of options on the permanent side and on the temporary side for our tenants as well and our business owners. So let's talk about implementation, which I think is one of the most beneficial aspects of it. We have tried to simplify the code and make it as user-friendly as possible. That being said, this is a substantial change, and we understand that. So we are creating the quick fact sheets. What you see on the one side is the selling, leasing, or renting property on the left, kind of gives you the options, just an illustration, if you will. In the middle, it actually demonstrates what the safety visibility triangles are if you were to put up something like a yard or garage sale or any of those open house ones. So that kind of illustrates how we're going to tackle it. And then for our consultants who want to know what the existing code had and what they can do in the new code, we're proposing a fact sheet, and it does a comparison between the two to provide kind of a quick analysis. So along with staff training, as Chris mentioned, as we're going through the process, we're not done listening. So if council was to approve this tonight, and it goes effective in the next 30 days, we're going to provide these sheets to roll out. We're going to be reaching out to our existing consultants and letting them know that the new code is coming if they have any questions, and asking if they would like to do a Q&amp;A session with staff before it gets rolled out. As we continue through the process, as Chris said, we're going to be continuing to listen. We're going to gather feedback, what's working, and if we need to make minor adjustments afterwards, we'll continue to do that. So that's kind of a long presentation. Apologize for that. So let's get to the best part, key findings. We believe the new code before you this evening complies with the Supreme Court decision, which is first and foremost of importance. The second is, it is definitely more user-friendly for all users. And third, we still believe it promotes and enhances the built environment and provides a high-quality aesthetic that allows stakeholders the ability to convey a variety of messages to the public. So with that, we would ask that you would concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission's unanimous recommendation to adopt Ordinance 2018-08 approving the changes to Chapter 21 of the Peoria City Code pertaining to the sign code. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. It was quite a good presentation. I appreciate all of the work that you guys have done on this for such a long period of time. How long's it been going on?
Mayor and Council, I think we started a little shy two years ago. So a lot of work.
Wow. Council, any questions? Council, Vice Mayor Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to second what you just said about the work that has gone into this. You would think that kind of revising a sign code, if you really weren't involved in it, it didn't seem like that big of a deal. But it's like peeling an onion back. I mean, just more things pop up. This is really, in my mind, this is a fantastic solution, in my opinion. So I commend you for the hard work. I think the public will appreciate the simplicity of it and to be able to go in and look at it and kind of see how things apply to them, business owners included, obviously. I did have one question because it just seems to bother me every time I wake up in the morning and I'm driving to work and I see all these new, I think you call them snipe signs, is that correct? Snipe signs, the ones that pop up overnight?
The Bandit signs?
What are they called?
Bandit signs?
I don't know.
Bandit?
Bandit signs, that's it. Bandit signs. So I don't know where snipe came from. I have no idea. So how does this apply to though? So when you, you know, you head out in the morning and all of a sudden, there's five new signs in the same intersection, zip-tied to city property that we buy ugly houses and we'll teach you real estate, all those things. How does that apply?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, members of council, that's a great question. And Bandit signs were prohibited in the prior code, they're still prohibited. So if we think about the public right-of-way, what signs are permitted in the public right-of-way? What is permitted in the public right-of-way is government speech, so the signs that relate to traffic devices and so forth. Sign walkers with some restrictions, like keeping out of the site triangle. Residential roadway signs, the signs that Lori pointed out for residential context of open house or yard sale, those types of things. And political signs during the political season. Now during the political season, it's also important to point out, because we can no longer distinguish the content of the sign, that also during that period of time, it also enables other types of non-commercial messages on temporary signs during the political season. But those are the only types of temporary signs that would be allowed in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Acosta?
I would also like to thank you for making it so much easier to read. I remember when you first presented it, it was just a lot of words. But I have a question for the prohibited signs. I know you mentioned no flashing signs or things like that, but I'm not sure if this applies to what I'm about to say, but I know my school has like a sign for the, at the entrance, and it does have, it's digital, so it has slides. And sometimes it is used for promotional reasons, like our school plays or Shred-a-thon. So I just wanted to know if that would, I don't know, affect that.
Mayor, members of council, I think what you're referring to, what's called in the industry is electronic message center, changeable copy sign with electronic component to it. So those are generally prohibited in the city with some exceptions. Some of those exceptions include government speech, like a school, they are a separate governmental entity of the state, drive-through menu boards, obviously there's a necessity to possibly have electronic component to those, gas station monument signs, there's a portion of the monument sign that could be electronic message center. And then also the overall, any sign that's not visible to the naked eye from a street or right-of-way. So if you think about maybe some of these larger centers that have some distance separation from the right-of-way, maybe there's some internalized space. If we can't see it from the right-of-way, it's simply not regulated. So in those contexts, an EMC or electronic message center would be appropriate.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
That's a great question because that's exactly what I was going to ask you because I have a question for you. So what do you do with a school and/or business that's located inside a residential area that have their billboard or their sign on 24 by 7? There's no regulation to have that light go off at a certain time, dusk to dawn regulation?
Councilmember Edwards, members of council, great question. And we've obviously dealt with that scenario.
I have.
We do have some general provisions that would still apply. And we do have a provision that applies to, we do have restrictions for any illuminated signs for non-residential uses in residential districts. So think of a school, think of a church or another type of religious facility. So if there's illumination that's part of that sign, any of the sign within 200 feet of residential areas, they have to go dark between 10:00 p.m. or 5:00 a.m. or when the establishment is closed. So for the example of a school, they close at, let's say they all leave by 5:00, that sign would have to be, you know, extinguished by that time period. Also, we have new brightness limitations that we place on a sign to control the amount of light trespass that would emanate from the sign. So we do have some standards that would apply to those as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing, and I declare this public hearing open. If there's anyone who would like to address this issue, I invite you to the podium to make your comments. And in the meantime, I have two speaker request forms. And so I'm going to call Ken Parsons to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Ken Parsons. I'm a resident here in Peoria, and my wife and I also own and operate a sign business in Peoria. So we are intimately familiar with both the previous code and becoming more so with the new code, and have had some input into it. So I think that staff has done a tremendous job with the work that they've done, the compliance with Reed v. Gilbert and the additional sign allowances for buildings and some of the way that sign square footage is calculated, is all good. The comment that I would make is I hear a lot about the city, about how we want to attract new businesses, how we want to create places, how we want to be vibrant city, and how we want to attract new businesses and keep those businesses. And I don't hear that when I read through the sign code. What I hear is that signs are bad, and we have to limit them, and we have to control them and contain them. And the signs that we're allowing, even with the new sign types, they're really just a variation on a theme. What we have is the same sign types that have been available for 50 years. And there was some discussion about EMCs and electronic message centers and digital displays. And if we're going to be the, in my opinion, if we're going to be the type of city that we want to be moving forward, we want to be seen as a progressive, forward-thinking, attractive city to attract new businesses, we need to allow those types of signs. We don't, you know, not forced on anybody, but we need to allow them. We need to give businesses the opportunity to take advantage of those signs and the economic development, the economic benefits of having those types of signs. Nobody buys those signs and puts them in place for the sake of having them. They buy them, they spend more money on those signs. They're considerably more costly. Why does a school do it? Because they're effective. They don't do it because they just willy-nilly want to have a digital sign. They do it because they're more effective than the other sign types that are available. So having said that and understanding the process that the city and staff has come through to get to this point, my comment for this evening would be that I'd be in favor of council, you know, affirming this code as it stands today. But my real request is that we look at it and continue to look at it and sincerely look at it in the coming year, to look at what we can do to make it even better, to make these other additional sign types available. And that we're not still just allowing signs that have been allowed for 50 years that have been available. We look at new types and new ways of doing things. So that's really my request. I think it's important that we get Reed v. Gilbert behind us. We need to get that done and be compliant with that Supreme Court order. But beyond that, I think we really need to look at what we have available to us as an industry, as a city, and see if that isn't part of the problem. industry, as a city, and see if that isn't part of what we want to be and what we want to do, and how do we control that and make it attainable, still within our, within, you know, the way that we want our city to be. We need to control that. It doesn't, you know, we don't want to be Vegas, but we want to be, you know, we want to be modern and progressive. So, with that, I'll close. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, staff, for all of your work that you've put on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I would encourage you, Mr. Hockes, to have a conversation with Mr. Parsons and find out if there's some signs that we've missed, and we certainly don't want to limit ourselves in the future either. So, if you guys could have a conversation, I think that would be, this would be a perfect time for that. And I have one more request to speak from Kathy Basque.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Basque. I am Assistant to Liz Recchia, the Government Affairs Director at WEMAR West Maricopa Association of Realtors. Liz apologizes for not being here this evening for this important meeting. She had a previous commitment, so I'm here in her stead. We would like to thank staff for listening to and considering our comments over the last several months. We would like to extend a special thank you to Lori Dever, to Chris Hockes, and Melissa Sigmund for their consideration of WEMAR's comments and suggestions. They've been very open, the dialogue has been very back and forth, and I think that we have shown that there is a good compromise on both ends, so that both parties are representative. We would like to, we're pleased that the city is assessing this ordinance next year, and WEMAR will provide information from our membership to help with that assessment when it is asked. Ms. Dever did ask, say that she was going to have the cheat sheet, which she kind of gave us a sneak peek, and WEMAR will post that on our website, we will have it at our meetings, we will educate our Realtor community of the sign ordinances, so that there's, hopefully, we'll head off a few erroneous, maybe budding heads. And WEMAR appreciates the time and the effort that the city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the city council in drafting this proposal, and we look forward to many positive changes in the future, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. I have no other requests to speak. Is there a member, any other members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? All right. Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Counsel, are there any further comments or questions, discussion? All right, then, do I have a motion on item 15R?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations and thanks for all your work on this. We'll now move on to item 16R. This is a budget amendment, Fire Medical Department Ambulance Service Phase II Implementation. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council, and we'll have Bobby Reese, our Fire Chief, that will present on this next phase of the implementation of Peoria Fire Medical's ambulance service.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm really honored to be here and ask for some more money to go to our next phase in the ambulance service, but here with us tonight, I have our Emergency Medical Chief, Jim Bratcher, to talk about Phase 1, which was completion of the first two ambulances that we put into service last January of 2017, and to give you an update of how successful that's been, and then ask for funding to go to Phase 2. And with me, I'll turn it over to Jim Bratcher.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As Chief Reese stated, and there we go, this is the proposal of the budget amendment to, so we can move forward with Phase 2 of the ambulance service delivery. And the request specifically, and I'll go into more details of what the request covers here a little bit later in the presentation, but the request is approval amount of $1,408,485, let me try that one more time, $1,408,485 for implementation of the Phase 2 of the ambulance The presentation, I want to talk a little bit about where we are with current ambulance service operations, what we've accomplished to date. Our service delivery to date, specifically call volume, we'll delve into the specific amendment request and what that entails, and we'll talk a little bit, if the request is approved, what our next steps will be as we move forward. Our mission has been with the ambulance service and within the fire service is to always provide the highest level of dedicated, reliable, and consistent service to the city of Peoria, and part of the implementation of this program continues to do that. Current ambulance operations, just a quick review, Rescue 193, which is our first rescue, began operations in January 25th of 2017, a little over a year ago. It is located on 83rd Avenue, just a little bit south of Thunderbird. Rescue 195 followed about two weeks later on February 14th of last year, and that's located on Lake Pleasant Road, just a little bit south of Happy Valley Road. In the previous year, actually to date or through February, our call volume, and I know this is a busy slide, I'll break this down, but Rescue 193 obviously has been a busier unit, although Rescue 195 has kind of surprised us in being equally busy in that area. Total dispatches for 193 are about 2,800 in the year, resulting in about 2,241 transports, consistent with what we see with the overall EMS transports. Advanced life support transports make about 60% of that, about 1,400 advanced life support transports for that unit, and 827 basic life support transports. Rescue 195 has had a total of 2,200 dispatches, resulting in 1,688 transports, and again, the breakdown is approximately 60-40%, with ALS being the majority of those. Our total dispatch with both rescues over the past year, a little over, about two weeks over a year of full operation, was just over 5,000 transports, which is a fairly busy, busy number, a fairly high number for our rescue service. So, we're pleased that it's being utilized and utilized well as we move forward. Our success is to date, it's been smoother than we anticipated implementing this new service into the fire department. It has been embraced by the membership as a manager in the fire department. I couldn't ask for more support or a greater level of commitment from our membership. As I mentioned before, we've seen a high utilization rate, and we've seen, and obviously, we've put more resources into the city, we've seen an increased availability or increased resource for the city and the residents of the city. Cost recovery to date, and I will talk about these numbers in more detail, these were as of yesterday morning. We have received in cost recovery $1,656,000 and a few dollars more than that. The operational cost, which I will break down, is, has been a little over $2 million. Now, operational costs, if you recall when we came to you before with a similar mid-year request about two years ago, those operational costs or the startup cost, where to get the ambulance going. The operational costs that you see there include the startup cost and what it's cost to operate to date. The accounts receivable in health billing, medical billing, it is a delayed process which can take months, if not the better part of a year. The accounts receivable we have to date are $728,000. Now, I've got to break that down a little bit further, of the $728,000, a portion of that will be bad debt. We don't know the exact number on that, we're still, even though we've been out of the year, we're still in the ambulance or the medical billing process, but a portion of that will be bad debt as we move forward. The budget amendment request specifically asks for the acquisition of three ambulances. Two of those ambulances will be staffed, the additional ambulance will be used as a non-staffed reserve vehicle, the hiring of 14 firefighters to cover all three shifts on the two ambulances with two people per ambulance, and that's an additional person to serve to cover the time off required or to fill in as a reserve, medical and communication equipment for both ambulances, the training cost for the firefighter academy and for the paramedics to staff the ambulance, all of the personal protective equipment needed for the firefighters in the course of their duty, both in the fire-based response and EMS response. And there'll be additional funding included in the FY19 supplemental as we move forward. Our next step, if approved by council, will be the implementation of those two additional ambulances. We'll start right away, but our timeline to get them in service will be about a year, so March 2019, and we will continue to work in partnership with private ambulance providers as we move forward to ensure we have seamless ambulance service delivery within the city of Peoria. And with that, any, we're open for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support this request because I believe that having our firefighters and our paramedics on our ambulances provides a much better service to our citizens than we previously had. I think this is a good use of our taxpayer dollars because it will provide a direct benefit to all of our citizens, so I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Benzbacher?
I think it's a great use of our taxpayer dollars too, and I'm really happy to see this moving forward. I, one question with regard to the bad debt. Is there a standard percentage that we can project what that would be?
Mayor, Council, Member Benzbacher, we don't have that data right now, we can provide it as we come up with it. I can give you the experience in Phoenix, they've been in the ambulance service about 30 years. That bad debt has been consistently between 9 and 11% every year.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
Please.
All right. Well, there's been a little bit of talk about how Uber is replacing ambulances, and I just, I was wondering if you have noticed kind of a decrease in ambulance usage since the Uber app has came out. I'm not sure if it really has affected us in Peoria, but I know that in Kansas, once the Uber app came out, that there was ambulance usage percent, like the, let me read what I wrote down. Researchers found the app reduced per capita ambulance usage rates by around 7%. So, I don't know if we've seen it here in Peoria, I was just wondering if...
Mayor and Youth Liaison Acosta, studies have shown that that's very young still in the system. Phoenix has used taxi vouchers for a long time, and for the very low acuity calls, where there's really sending them off to a doctor, an alternative location instead of a hospital, like a clinic or a doctor's office, or they need their medications, and so they give them a taxi voucher in order to go to get their medications and things of that nature. And so, some of the research that I've seen on Uber or Lyft is along that way, and I know that in the east part of the country, that they're starting to use a little bit of both for those very low acuity calls. So, that's something that we'll look at in the near future.
All right, and thank you again, I appreciate all the work that you do. I wasn't trying to take away from this presentation because I do think that you should be well-funded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Benzbacher?
Oh, I can't...
Who wanted to speak? You, Vice Mayor Finn?
Thank you. Quick question on the financial numbers. It looked to me as though if we collected, if 40% of that AR turned out to be bad debt, we'd still be close to operating in the black. Am I reading that correctly? So, if we're at the 9 to 11% range, we are going to be operating in the black if we're able to collect on those accounts receivable. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Finn, my guess, because when we started in January, but we didn't start billing until about March, April, and then you still see that lag time from the time that you turn on the hot water to the time you get hot water, is about two, three months. So, we still have a really, a couple of months before we see a full year of revenue coming in. My guess is we're going to be close to breaking even.
Thank you.
Councilmember Leonie?
Yeah, Chief, number one, how many ambulances do we have? I know you told me once before, but how many do we have now?
Currently, we have two staffed ambulances in service, and we have one reserve ambulance that's non-staffed as a backup.
Are we going to pick up any more?
With, if this proposal with council's approval will add an additional two staffed ambulance and an additional reserve for a total of four staffed ambulances and two reserves.
You know, I often wondered why, when I first got elected, why we never had our own ambulance service, but now I'm glad that we do have them, and I've had people telling me that they do a great job, get them to the hospital on time and take care of them. Just want to congratulate you on that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. So, I would just like to say that I really appreciate how much the entire Fire Medical Department has embraced this. I mean, this is a huge operation, a huge undertaking, and it has really come off without a hitch in the first phase, and now I look forward to the same thing in the second phase, and I just really thank you and ask that you pass along our thanks to everybody who has really just jumped in with both feet on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So, do I have a motion on item 16R?
Second.
A motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is called to the public on non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form, place it in the speakers, or the bin next to the speaker's podium. I do not have any speaker request forms, so we will move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne?
Great, thank you, Mayor, and had two items that we wanted to speak to. The first one is a very special activity, and that's with our Fire Medical Department as well, and so with that, as I said, they come down. As you know, our first responders are constantly subjected to adverse and unsafe conditions and sometimes life-threatening events. Recently, one of Peoria's own was recognized for just an extraordinary life-threatening call that they had responded to, and so I have the distinct honor to introduce, coming up to us, Engineer Steven Gunn, and to formally introduce him, and also to talk about the events that have unfurled recently. We also have our Fire Chief Reese as well, as Fire Chief Stacy Irvine.
Mayor and Council, it gives me a great honor to have, to distinguish members with me today, and the main focus here is Steven Gunn, who pulled out an individual man a couple of years ago, and I'll explain why, is at a fire down about 75...
years ago, and I'll explain why, is at a fire down about Seventy-Fifth Avenue, close to Vice Mayor Finn's house. And there was quite an incident. There was a shooting involved, an arsonist involved. And so it had flashed over, and Sheriff's Department got there, broke out the windows. They saw the man, you know, about six feet into the house, and very, the first Peoria company that got there is Steven Gunn, our engineer, jumped out. He was fully dressed and without hesitation for life as he went into the engulfed room and started to pull out the man. And with that, he received the state firefighter of the year, and we knew we had submitted him for this Presidential National Medal of Valor, and we knew he was going to receive it, but it was an election year, and they put it off, and they put it off, and they put it off. And then a few, about a month ago, we got a call from the Department of Justice saying you're going to, that Steve Gunn was going to receive the award, and we had two weeks to get everything in order. And we couldn't tell anybody because it was top secret, and they had to get clearance and their family clearance and everything to go to DC. And so they went to DC, and also to my right here is Chief Irvine, who accompanied him in DC. And I'll, from there, we'll play the video, and then I'll let the two share their experiences with him, but it was quite an honor.
Engineer Steven Gunn. Medal of Valor presented to Engineer Steven Gunn of the Peoria, Arizona Fire Medical Department for stepping through smoke and flames to rescue an unconscious man from a house set on fire by an arsonist. As the intense heat melted his helmet and burned his skin, Engineer Gunn managed to remove the victim from a room engulfed in flames.
It's quite a beautiful medal. It appears to be eighteen karat gold, solid gold, and you want to show it off, and, yes. If he, I'll let him announce it. If I can approach the...
Absolutely.
...pass it around.
I was present when you won the firefighter of the year award, and I actually saw this presentation on TV while you were there in Washington, DC. And I tell you, I just cannot be more proud. It was so fun to watch all of that. I feel like a proud mother.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Was it difficult for you to watch that video?
Yeah, a little bit. Just kind of brings it back. That night was pretty crazy, just the circumstances of everything and how it all happened.
I don't know. If I hold this up, can they see it on TV? I'm doing it. Look how great that is. Wow. What an honor.
It also has a pin and a ribbon that he'll be using in his uniform. And then, as you see, a certificate signed by President Trump.
Quite the signature. You see a doctor. And there is significance to the gold and blue ribbon, too, isn't there? That the medal is on?
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, on the back of it has my name and a number, which is one-hundred-and-twenty. That's the number of, they've issued. It was an award started after nine eleven.
Oh.
The Bush administration has started it to kind of honor public safety officials, and I don't believe they do it every year, because I was there with twelve other recipients, six of whom were from that San Bernardino terrorist attack in 2015.
Yeah.
And there are some other individuals as well, but like Chief was saying, I think with the election year and stuff, it kind of was delayed. I don't know if it's a yearly thing, though.
Politics. So it has a number, one-hundred-and-twenty on the back, which is how many there have been?
That they've given out since nine eleven. Yeah, so...
That's an incredible honor.
Chief Irvine, would you like to share any of your experience there?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to say a few words. I just want to publicly thank the Fire Chief, Andy Granger, and the City Manager, Jeff Tyne, for allowing me on such short notice to be the department and the city's representative to go back and witness Steven get his medal. As a city employee, and as an American, to have the opportunity to go to the White House and sit in the East Room, literally feet away from the Attorney General and the President, going up there and speaking in front of an audience, it was an amazing experience, and I am extremely, extremely appreciative of that opportunity. And I want to thank them personally here tonight, because sometimes you just don't feel you belong, because I'm in this front row, and it was the Attorney General, Jeff Sessions, next to the Treasury Secretary, Steve Mnuchin, next to the Director of the CIA, Mike Pompeo, next to Congressman Darryl Issa, and then me. And it's like, which one of these just doesn't belong up here? So it was, it was truly, truly a unique experience and one that I will never forget. So I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be our city's representative to go back and witness this.
You know, and the amazing part is, they were there to honor you and you.
They were there for Steven.
Well, yeah, tremendous.
Thank you.
Really so proud, so very proud. And congratulations to you, and thank you so much for being willing to risk your life, to run into a burning building, something that, you know, I'm not sure if you understand, everyone would not do that. I can probably say from this point, no one would. Councilmember Hunt?
Have you been able to keep in touch with the gentleman that you saved at all? Do you know how he is, or?
Unfortunately, he didn't make it.
Oh.
Yeah, we, his son came down, though, the next shift, and we kind of spoke with him a little bit, and he was very appreciative of our crew and what we attempted to do and to give his father a chance, but unfortunately, no, he did not make, survive his injuries.
Well, you're just as courageous because you took that, that step to save him.
Thank you.
So thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you both. Thank you all three. I appreciate you being here, and I guess there's really nothing else we can say to top that, so maybe we should adjourn, huh?
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know, there is. But yeah, very humbling moment, so thank you for that. One last thing, we just did want to give you an opportunity to look at our video of upcoming city special events.
Thank you.
Welcome to Peoria Sports Complex, spring training home of the San Diego Padres and the Seattle Mariners.
Great, again, shows the diversity of educational and cultural and recreational opportunities that we have here in the city. So with that, that's all we have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Youth Council Liaison Acosta?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So we had a leadership conference on February twenty-fourth. It was a Saturday morning led by Casa Grande, the Casa Grande Youth Commission. They had two, I think it was two Arizona House Representatives there to speak to us and a congressman. We had several workshops, and it was just a great day to get together all the teens and hear the stories of these politicians and why they do what they do and why we, the next generation, should be motivated to change the world. We also had a teen job fair yesterday. It was a partnership with Peoria Support. We had a great turnout. It was actually one of the first teen-centered job fairs in the West Valley. We had Channel Twelve come out and showcase our fashion show. We had a lot of teens that were able to talk to the employers that set up booths. We had, oh, I don't know, maybe like twenty, twenty employers there where they could have interviews and learn how to write their resumes. So hopefully, it's something that we continue throughout the years. Again, just congratulations to, to you. I'm sorry. I forgot your name.
Engineer Gunn.
Engineer Gunn. I am so sorry. I'm terrible with names, but congratulations. Thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patena?
Well, thank you, Mayor. On February twenty-second, there was an event sponsored by the Police Department. It was a homeless outreach program at Rio Vista Recreational Center. Over fifty homeless people showed up there to try to get services. They came in on their own. There was booths there that were staffed by the Veterans Associations and not-for-profits that actually serve homeless people. They did blood pressure, blood work, haircuts. They gave twenty-four haircuts out to men who needed them, who were potentially going on job interviews. But I think the best thing about this program is that they don't just bring these people in and then let them go. They actually reach out to them, and they try to find programs that they can be engaged in, and sometimes just giving that homeless person a hand up is all they need. And so very proud of the police for putting that on, and it was a very, very successful event. I hope to have another one soon. On February twenty-third, I attended the 2018 charity game at the Peoria Sports Complex. It was in Colonnade. It's just a great facility. It was kind of cold that day, so I stayed in the Colonnade like a sissy that I am, and I watched the game on television. It's very interesting to see the difference from the very first game, their throwing errors and the fielding errors that these professional athletes have, and all these great plays they play, they make as the year goes on. So it was, it was a fun game to watch. On February twenty-fourth, I attended Park Fest at Fletcher Heights, sponsored by Councilmember Edwards. It was a little different Park Fest. It was at the trailhead, and so what it did was it introduced our trailhead system to a lot of our citizens, gave them the opportunity to see our trail, to use our trail, to know all about our trails. We have a lot of trails in the city of Peoria that are well-utilized. Sportsman's Warehouse was there. They gave hats away and lanyards, and the police, of course, were always there, giving bicycle helmets to little children. That's always a great, great part of those Park Fest events. On March third, I went to the Bravo Peoria at the Sunrise Mountain Library. Sunrise Mountain Library is just a, just a great facility, and they were selling books and CDs, and there was a balloon man there, face painting, they had fresh donuts and coffee, they had a reptile show. It was a great event and an excellent turnout for families, and there was a lot of families there with little children, having a good time. And lastly, congratulations to Engineer Steven Gunn for your heroism and your extreme bravery and receiving the Medal of Valor, which is the highest honor that you can get as a first responder. Not to take anything away from you, Steven, but I'm pretty certain under the same circumstances that all the firefighters in Peoria would have done essentially the same thing. But congratulations to you, and thank you again for your bravery. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Benzbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I, a little bit of duplication here, I'm sorry, but I want to congratulate our Police Department, too, on the Homeless Connection Event on the twenty-second. It really was a fantastic event. I went for a little while in the morning and saw that event unfold, and the effort is really tremendous, and it's, it doesn't end there. It's an ongoing effort. But I think what is so wonderful about it and why I really support the effort is because it's such a great way for us to get in front of homelessness. And Peoria, as a growing city, has the opportunity to get in front of it and stay in front of it. And as Councilwoman Patena said, it was wonderful to see them offering so many services to these folks, and I could see the overwhelming desire to receive help and want to get out of that situation, which is great to work with because it isn't, it isn't always that way out in the streets, but it was a fantastic event. So congratulations to Peoria PD and particularly Detective Scott for the work that she's doing. I did, I was not able to actually go to the Fletcher Heights Park Fest, but I'm glad you mentioned it. I went afterwards. My husband and I were so curious about seeing how that trailhead would look, and it is just such a great, unique way to access a trail, and I just loved seeing something different like that. I think it's going to be very popular, and again, just another way to give the community access and close to businesses, and it was just, it was really neat. And to Engineer Gunn, congratulations on this amazing honor. Thank you so much for sharing it with us. You've said from the very beginning you were just doing your job. which is great to work with because it isn't, it isn't always that way out in the streets. But it was a fantastic event. So congratulations to Peoria PD and particularly Detective Scott for the work that she's doing. I did, I was not able to actually go to the Fletcher Heights Park Fest, but I'm glad you mentioned it. I went afterwards. My husband and I were so curious about seeing how that trailhead would look. And it is just such a great, unique way to access a trail. And I just loved seeing something different like that. I think it's going to be very popular. And again, just another way to give the community access and close to businesses. And it was just, it was really neat. And to Engineer Gunn, congratulations on this amazing honor. Thank you so much for sharing it with us. You've said from the very beginning you were just doing your job and that anyone would do that. And, and I have to believe that's the case for any of you that do serve. Don't think for one second that you did not belong there. It was those there serving our country, leading our country, that were honored to be graced with your presence. So thank you for making us proud. Congratulations. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Finn?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. I don't want to duplicate some of the things that were said, but I do have to congratulate Steven Gunn. It's fantastic. He seemed a little uncomfortable with all of the attention. But yeah, I understand. But just amazing. Congratulations to you and thank you for your service out there and keeping us all safe. I also just wanted to mention, it just, it amazes me that it's, it seems like every time we come to a council meeting, the work and the recognition that city employees get, whether it's firefighters or it's police officers or it's the, the signed presentation that, you know, took two years to put together and I thought it was absolutely, you know, perfect. I just, I don't know. I just, I, I think this is such an amazing city. And to be part of the city council and, and, and know that we have this, this amazing staff in this city just really makes Peoria home. And I just want to thank you all for everything that you do. So.
Well said. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, congratulations, Steven. There's going to be a clean sweep, I'm sure. Congratulations across the board. You did a phenomenal job and we are so proud and honored to have you serve here in Peoria. On the 22nd, I also attended the Homeless Outreach and it was just amazing this year. Every year that I've been doing it, it's usually we're, we're out going out and finding people to, to, you know, to come in. And this year it was just the opposite. We had people standing in line before the event even started that had got there on their own means because they knew what Peoria was offering that day. And so the services were just absolutely phenomenal. And I did go out and ride with Detective Scott. And four or five of the individuals that we met up with wanted to get there, but they didn't have the means. And so we were able to arrange transportation and get them a free haircut and medical checkups. And a couple got registered. They were VA vets because they had lost their cards. And so it was just a phenomenal connection. And I just, I am so proud of Peoria for making that stride. And I hope that this program outlasts all of us because it's, it's an amazing opportunity for us to help the less fortunate. And I'm just so proud to be part of a city that recognizes that, you know, we don't discriminate whether you're poor and homeless, that you are human beings and we absolutely value as citizens and residents of the state. So thank you for that. Thank you for everybody that came out to the Park Fest. It really wasn't a Park Fest. It was more of a Trail Fest. As Councilman Ben Sparker is going to have a Bark Fest, we had a Trail Fest. And so it, it really did showcase, you know, the 27 miles, 27-plus miles, I believe, that we have in Peoria of all the amazing trails and access points that we have along that new river and, and other places. And the turnout, even though it was, it was really cold, the turnout was phenomenal. There are a lot of walkers, a phenomenal amount of bike riders that had stopped in just to see what the event was about. And I just hope in the future that as we look at continuing our Park Fest, that maybe we look at doing some Trail Fest amenities because I think it's an op- great opportunity to introduce residents to great amenities that Peoria has, but opens up the entire valley trail system, whether it's Glendale, Surprise, because I know we're doing an extension with Glendale here soon, but also you can drive, you know, ride it all the way to downtown Phoenix just about. So I mean, it's just a phenomenal way to get around the state. And then one more thing, Vice Mayor Finn and I had the opportunity to tour Soldier's Best Friends last week. And what a phenomenal event, or an opportunity. If you haven't and don't know about this, this organization is they, they train service dogs for veterans. And so they go through a pretty extensive training period. They go out and vet dogs with the local animal shelters. So they're looking for particular attributes for the dog, from the dogs. And they pair them up with servicemen and women and then put them through this training. And, you know, sometimes it doesn't work out, but most of the time it does. Their, their track record is, is very high. And I just commend them for everything that they're doing for our veterans. And then lastly, Maylie, I just want to congratulate you and the Youth Advisory Board working with Support Peoria. I heard that that turnout yesterday was phenomenal. There was 27 employers. They, some of them were doing on-the-spot interviewing and hiring. There was actually hires that came out of yesterday's events. So congratulations to you and the youth to really give them an extra opportunity to, to find employment here in the valley. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been sitting here listening, I've been struck by the fact that it doesn't matter if you're old or young. We have something for everyone from one end of Peoria to the other. We have Trail Fest. We have hiking. We have libraries. We have festivals. And we have homeless and young people engagement activities to help them on their way. I remember when John and I a couple of years ago visited Peoria High School and asked the kids, "What's your biggest issue?" And they said, "We don't know how to get jobs and there are no jobs for us and we want to work, but we, we need more employment." And it looks like somewhere along the way, we've gotten it together and that's great. So many activities this time of year. I too was at the Bravo Peoria, but I got to go a day early. I was on the early, early sale for teachers. And I had donated some boxes of books to first-year teachers. They have a hard time getting classroom sets for their kids. And we all know, we've heard it so much, that Arizona teachers are not paid very well. And so if they have to take the money out of their own pocket to have books for kids either to take home or every child's not at the same reading level. So they need a variety of books with high interest. And so I got to actually meet the young teachers and they're so, kind of like I was about 1,000 years ago when I was a first-year teacher. Bright-eyed, bushy-tailed. They, they don't ever mention any hardships. They're just excited to be with kids and to have the opportunity to teach. They also mentioned they were very happy to be in Peoria. I had an opportunity to tour the Hart Pantry. Again, we all know Hart Pantry. We all support it tremendously. They've moved into a larger space out in just west of here. I'm not sure what the city limits are. And for those of you that may not be familiar with them, they provide food to homeless teenagers, including weekend bags because they're just as hungry on the weekend as they are during the weekday. And this is largely run by senior adults. And they really care about those kids and they, they keep that food coming. Since we first started working with them, they've just, they've outgrown three facilities now where they sort and pack the food. Congratulations to Julia Smock. Several of us were at the Peoria Educational Enrichment Foundation Dinner last night. For any of you that have been around a long time, Julia was just, she was on the, the school board for many years. Just super supporter of education and has worked at the legislature. She was an attorney in Phoenix and she was awarded the Award of Honor last night and certainly very, very well-deserved for her career. Doesn't seem like I can get away from schools. I visited a week or so ago on Saturday, the Flex Academy at Peoria High School, which is the group that now meets in Old Maine there, the sole occupants of Old Maine. And they had asked me to come and help them with a garden. I don't know where they got that idea. But I brought together and I really want to thank David Bell, who owns Advantage Landscaping. He not only donated all the materials to build beautiful patio space and garden area, but his own workers volunteered that day. And also a few Ask Me people were working that day. So that's another thing we really have here. We just have such generous people with their time and their money. And we, we just couldn't do what we do without people volunteering because there's not enough city money to do everything. We really count on just great people. Gosh, one last thing. Shakespeare, Shakespeare in the Park. If any of you were, you know, if, if you were able to attend Saturday night, it was right out here in Centennial Plaza. It was our first annual and there will be more. 400 people attended and little tiny children, all the way up to senior adults. We had jugglers. We had stilt walkers. We had traveling musicians. And the Southwest Shakespeare Company, which is a pretty big deal all over the valley, performed Twelfth Night. And it was, it's a very slapsticky Shakespeare play. It was all done in Shakespeare language, but they were in just regular clothes. And even the little children were just laughing at it. So it really reached all ages. We had the Youth Advisory. Kids were out selling things. Oh, I know what else I wanted to say about it. Kelles High School really came through. They, we had a contest for kids, high school kids to, who had memorized passages from Shakespeare. And it turned out there were four and they were all so good, it was impossible to decide on first, second, third place. So they're all going to get monetary amount towards college. But Kelles High School had three of those and I'm just going to say their names. Sammy Mills, Eunice Lee, and Kylie Gardunia. And then we had one from Centennial High School and that was Emily Salwecki. And they all performed monologues. And I don't know about any of you, but that takes a lot of guts when you're a high school kid to get up. And because they were preparing for our Shakespeare Festival, they were encouraged and they went ahead and competed in the English-speaking union Shakespeare competition in Mesa on February 24th. And none of them won or placed in that, but just the experience. And I just bet there are going to be a lot more of them next year out there. And that's just really bringing education to the public, which is what Shakespeare certainly did. So wow, I think that's all I have and ready for another week.
Councilmember Leonie?
Thank you. I just want to mention that Vicki already mentioned it and she did a great job on it, on this Hart Pantry Open House, which is in my district. And, you know, they, they feed the homeless kids. And all these kids, to my understanding, have to talk to the people who run the place. They, they have no place to live. They live in garages. If anybody wants to open their garage to them, they'd be more than happy to, to live in there. They, they live out of wash. They live in these, in these bushes. So I think it's a, it's a great thing that this Hart Pantry opens their doors and give these kids some food. And I think it's just great that if we can help them out in any way, we should be able to. At the open day, excuse me, at the open day at the, at the ballpark, it was just a great day. They fed everybody and it was a great, it was a great game. And all the, all the families that went with their kids, they all had a great time, especially the ones on the lawn where they can play ball. They got a little baseball field there. So which is great for these little kids to get out there in the fresh air and I bet they slept all night. I did want to mention on the third Tri-Trickle-Tug-War. And it was just great there, you know. This is a new place that just opened up. And they had their own event. They did it themselves. They spent their own money. And I don't believe they asked the city for anything. But I did want to say one thing. They're going to have it next year and I'm going to be there again. Because this year I was the chair lady because our fire department in the tug-of-war beat Glendale Fire Department. So isn't that great? Next year, maybe we can get the police department to go up against Glendale so it can win two in a row. I also want to mention on the Scotland Yard event that's, that's coming up on April 14th. And it's, they're going to have Coco for the movie. They're going to have free food, hot dogs, drinks, popcorn and ice cream. So come on down, bring the filming down and enjoy it. And I'm sure that, that you will have a great time. The last, the other thing I want to say is that we got Peoria Leadership coming up in September. So if you haven't signed up yet, get to sign up because you get about nine to 10 departments and they're all great. They're all professional people that, that give these classes. And you learn a lot about the city, especially if you want to become a politician. The last thing I want to say, and I hope I don't get in trouble because it's the second time I've, I've got written warning, but they threw them both out on the Shred-a-thon. I, I'm going to have a Shred-a-thon and it's going to be at, on March 24th at Cheyenne. But the, but the two, the two, the two violations that they said I did, which I didn't because they threw them out. And I just wish everybody lots of luck. Peter Dunn, congratulations to you, you and your family. Best of luck. God bless each and every one of you and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Gaetres?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Gunn. On February 24th, I too attended the Youth Leadership Day put on by Casa Grande's Youth Commission. And on March 5th, I was also at the Teen Job Fair event. It was such an amazing event for teens. It really helped them prepare for the real world and getting a job with their interviews and resume building because I believe that we all have a hard time creating a resume because the last time that I created a resume was not too long ago and I struggled. So going through the workshops kind of helped. And I would also like to thank our staff, vendors, volunteers and volunteers for helping the youth to be more knowledgeable and have a successful, brighter future. On March 3rd and 4th, I attended a DECA competition. It was really competitive and there were over 2,500 youth in attendance from all over the state of Arizona. And some students were foreign exchange students. It was, it was at the Arizona Grand Resort and Spa and I have never seen anything so competitive in the DECA, in the past two years I've been in DECA. So on March 3rd, I also attended the Shakespeare in the Park event. I apologize for being late due to my DECA state competitions. It was a great turnout, especially the empanada truck.